Raise these seats and dance.
Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting this Monday evening, April 7th. I now call this meeting in order. I ask that you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all of you who've been waiting, I apologize for the delay, but I thank you for your patience. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Certainly Mayor Newsom, Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Here.
Councilmembers Svirko Kuditsky.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine.
Here.
And Mayor Newsom.
Here. Okay, we've got a couple of ceremonial items to start off today's meeting. The first one is our Dispatcher Appreciation Proclamation, and we'll have a brief presentation by Dispatch Supervisor Tyo Wilson. Um, Anumundu, Anumudu. Sorry. Welcome. Want me to read the proclamation first? Sorry. Got it? Okay, you're a dispatch operator. You know what it's like to have to read a lot of information, so bear with me. Proclamation: Whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of public safety personnel is critical to protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the dedicated public safety dispatchers serve the citizens of the city of San Mateo on a daily basis by answering emergency and non-emergency calls for assistance and coordinating public safety field units. And whereas these career professionals answer over 20,000 911 calls per year. And whereas these professionals measure their success in the lives that are saved by the 911 system each and every day. Whereas public safety telecommunications are a single vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety communications professionals work under challenging and stressful circumstances. And whereas public safety communication professionals dedicate their lives and careers to helping others. And whereas in 1991, the United States Congress designated the second week in April as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And whereas California Public Safety Telecommunicators Week will recognize all public safety dispatchers who are an integral part of California's first responder team, who work 24 hours per day, seven days per week, and serve as the first critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And now therefore, I, Robert Newsom Jr., the mayor of the city of San Mateo, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby declare the week of April 13th through 19th, 2025, to be the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the San Mateo, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and our citizens safe. Dispatchers Appreciation Week, signed today, Robert Newsom, Mayor. And I now give you a chance to say some comments.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody, and good evening. And I'll keep this short and sweet. Dispatchers don't really like attention on themselves. But we just appreciate this, and dispatchers are usually the unseen heroes in public safety. So even though there usually might be a little uncomfortable acknowledging and accepting awards like this, we really do appreciate it. I just want to say thank you to this, to everyone here. The great city of San Mateo that we work for, the chief. We have great command staff and police officers and the great police department we work for as well. So thank you, everybody.
Fantastic. Well, it looks like we have some support that's come out, so I'd ask them all to come up, and we'll take a picture with your proclamation. Does the council want to join me? All right, let's go. Okay, moving on. Our next ceremonial proclamation is for Arab American Heritage Month. We have, we have joining us Afif Baba from the President of the Ramallah Club, and Habaya Enmasa from the Council of American Islamic Relations, known as CARE. And before we start, I'm going to say a quick statement. So before I read this proclamation, I wanted to thank the local Arab American community that have come to join us tonight. In addition to CARE and the Ramallah Club, I also want to thank Deacon Fred Toda, one of our San Mateo Police Department chaplains, and any and all Arab American city employees and staff. And of course, I would like to welcome my family. I myself have been married into an Arab American family for over 19 years. My mother-in-law, Hilda Dubai, is here with us tonight, from, originally from Bethlehem. My father-in-law, Nabeel, Bill Dubai, was a proud Ramalan. My wife, Jen, my two daughters, Maeve and Mara, are all proud Palestinian Arab Americans. And by affiliation, in my heart, I'm proud to stand with all Arab Americans today and every day. My in-laws, like so many immigrants, came to America with very little, but they truly embodied the American dream. They worked hard, built businesses, had a family, and they helped lift up people around them. Bill and Hilda were both from large families, and they worked to bring so many of their siblings to America, helping dozens, possibly hundreds, all get to live the American dream. America was built by immigrants. We need to continue to welcome them, as immigrants are a large part of our country's success. Arab Americans are diverse, from over 22 countries. Arabic is the fifth most spoken language in the world, spoken by 5.5% of the world's total population. Arab Americans represent only about 1.5% of the US population, but their contributions to our country are vast in terms of science, technology, arts, culture, and social justice. It's also difficult to honor Arab Americans and not feel appalled by the continued ongoing strife, particularly in the countries of Palestine, Syria, and Lebanon. Every day, my family continues to try to keep them top of mind, and we continue to pray for peace throughout the world, but particularly for them. And so with that, I'd like to read tonight's proclamation. And before I do, I think I have a fellow council member who would also like to say something.
Yeah, I'll keep it short and sweet. I'm a lifelong resident of San Mateo, and the vibrant diversity and inclusivity of our city is something I cherish deeply. I'm pleased to see this proclamation come before us, and I want to say how important it is that we all stand firmly against all forms of hate and remain opening and welcoming to all. And I want to say Happy Arab American Heritage Month. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas Arab Americans have a rich history in the United States, and for over a century have enriched our nation through meaningful contributions across all facets of society, including medicine, law, business, education, technology, public service, and the arts. And whereas individuals of Arab descent have brought with them a vibrant cultural heritage, enriching their communities through sharing of traditions and active engagement in civic and public life. And whereas Arab Americans have brought to America their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education, and diversity in faith and creed, which have added strength to our great nation. And whereas Arab Americans have also enriched our society by sharing in the entrepreneurial, American spirit that makes our nation prosperous. And whereas the celebration of Arab American ancestry and cultural heritage educates our fellow Americans and helps counter misconceptions and harmful stereotyping by recognizing their many achievements. Whereas Arab Americans join all Americans in the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. And whereas the incredible contributions of the heritage of Arab Americans have helped us to build a better nation, now therefore I, Robert Newsom Jr., the mayor of the city of San Mateo, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Arab American Heritage Month. And I'm going to give both the President of the Ramallah Club and the Council of Islamic, American Islamic Relations, a moment to come up and address the council.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Councilmembers, and thank you, Mayor Newsom, for the opportunity. My name is Michael Musleh. I am here instead of Afif Baba, he couldn't make it. I'm also Vice President of the Ramallah Club. It's, it's joyful to, to see the city of San Mateo be so inclusive and accepting and, and show an appreciation to constituents of its own. We strive to become members of society. I was born here but raised in the Middle East, so I have both, both brains in my head of how to be an immigrant and be a US citizen as well. So proud to be, and we appreciate your recognition, and thank you for keeping the good work going.
Thank you, Mother.
Hi, my colleague Hibba won't be joining me today, but I am here on behalf of CARE, the Council on American Islamic Relations. And we want to thank you for recognizing Arab American Heritage Month. And this proclamation is especially meaningful as the Arab and Muslim community has faced an unprecedented, an unrelenting wave of anti-Muslim, anti-Arab, and anti-Palestinian hate and discrimination in the last 18 months. In those last 18 months, we have witnessed an unprecedented surge, creating a climate of fear, hostility, and discrimination that directly impacts San Mateo Muslim, Arab, and Palestinian individuals. In 2024, CARE offices nationwide received the highest number of complaints in our 30-year history, with 8,658 incoming intakes. While this proclamation is appreciated and needed, there is also another step of action we believe this council can take. We want to echo our friends in San Mateo in urging this council to adopt an ethical investment policy and review its investments. This means adopting environmental, social governance guidelines, ESG guidelines, clear policy language implementing a negative screen against genocide and apartheid, and a clear timeline. Once again, we thank the city of San Mateo for recognizing Arab American Heritage Month, and we look forward to continuing working with you to ensuring a just, diverse, and equitable San Mateo for all. Thank you so much.
I'm going to bring up the proclamations, and we're going to take a photo. So if anybody wants to join us, please come up here to the front. You guys want to come up or? Someone want to hold the proclamation?
Oh, you got it.
One of our contribution, not only to America, but the whole world.
And our last proclamation and ceremonial item for tonight is that it is National Library Week. Yay, libraries! I would ask Roxana Singh, our city librarian, our new city librarian, please join us, and whoever else wants to come up from the library. I am going to go ahead and read the, oh, come on up, Sarah. I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas libraries spark creativity, fuel imagination, and inspire lifelong learning and offering a space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities. And whereas libraries serve as a vibrant community hub, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong learning. And whereas individuals, or sorry, libraries provide free and equitable access to books, digital tools, and innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals, regardless of background, have the support they need to learn, connect, and thrive. And whereas libraries partners with schools, businesses, excuse me, organizations, connecting the dots to maximize resources, increase efficiency, and expand access to essential services, strengthening the entire community. And whereas libraries empower job seekers and entrepreneurs and lifelong learners by providing access to resources, training, and opportunities that support career growth, growth, and economic success. And whereas libraries nurture young minds through storytimes, STEAM programs, literacy initiatives, and fostering curiosity and a love of learning that lasts a lifetime. And whereas libraries protect the right to read, think, and explore without censorship, standing as champions of intellectual freedom and free expression. And whereas dedicated librarians and library workers provide welcoming spaces that inspire discovery, collaboration, and creativity for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers across the country are joining together to celebrate National Library Week under the theme "Drawn to the Library." And now therefore I, Robert Newsom Jr., mayor of the city of San Mateo, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim April 6th through 12th as National Library Week. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their libraries, explore its resources, and celebrate all the ways the library draws us together as a community. Happy National Library Week.
Through, through the mayor, if I can add.
Absolutely.
I also wanted to say congratulations to Roxana on your new role as San Mateo's head librarian. We're very excited to have you, and congratulations to you. And what a great way to start Library Week, so.
And if I could just.
Absolutely.
I'm a little biased. People know. From way back when, I am a library lover and was so proud to serve on the library board, and know these two women for all the capable, qualified, full of heart and spirit that you are. I thank you and all of your colleagues so much for giving San Mateo so much and really opening the doors to so many people in so many ways and providing just curiosity, motivation, and a feeling of safety and security as well. So I wish you luck this week. San Mateo celebrates, everyone. There's something going on every day at the library. So please enjoy and take our congratulations back to your colleagues.
And we're going to join you for a photo after you have your comments.
Okay. All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Newsom, Deputy Mayor Lorraine, Councilmember Nash, Diaz Nash, and Councilmember Fernandez, and Councilmember Svirko Kuditsky. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening and for the proclamation in honor of National Library Week. It's been a wonderful event so far with a successful festival in the library in San Mateo shakes. There are four official days that are celebrated as part of National Library Week, which you see here on this slide. Today, the American Library Association released the names of the top 10 most challenged books in 2024, which includes books such as The Bluest Eye by Toni Morrison and All Boys Aren't Blue by George M. Johnson. 2024 marks the third highest number of book challenges since ALA began tracking in 1980, 1990. Tomorrow is National Library Workers' Day, a day to celebrate all library workers for the amazing work they do to promote literacy, lifelong learning, and building community. I want to give our staff a big shout-out for the work they do every day. Thursday is National Library Outreach Day. We have committed ourselves to prioritizing outreach, and will soon be taking our new van out on the streets. Lastly, Friday is the day for advocacy for libraries. This is particularly important at this moment as libraries face challenges from book bans to cuts in funding at the federal level. Thank you again for taking this moment to celebrate libraries and honor National Library Week. And I'm going to turn it over to Sarah.
Thank you so much, Roxana, Mayor, council members. Thank you for having us this evening. As mentioned, San Mateo for National Library Week is marked by San Mateo Celebrates. This is a festival that has author talks, live performances, and family events that are all centered around the library. I think it is a beautiful opportunity. It is our third year running, and it is just our way of amplifying the gem that the library is. In my personal opinion, it is unrivaled and unmatched in the unique way that it is able to bring people together, welcome absolutely everybody, and spark curiosity. This week, we're also celebrating that the library is more than just about books. It is storytimes, it is job help, it's tech lending, maker spaces, it's a quiet corner to think big. We love all of these things about the library, and while we love a good celebration, there is also work that's being done. For the first time in quarter of a century, in quarter of a century, we are seeing potential risks for beloved local programs. And we're asking neighbors and local businesses for support to ensure the summer learning challenge happens without a hitch this year. We are also witnessing what's happening across the nation. We are seeing rising censorship efforts, and obviously, as Roxana mentioned, potential and proposed federal cuts to library funding. And what is at risk here is access. It's access to creativity, it's access to curiosity, information, and opportunity. So this week, I invite all San Mateans to visit the San Mateo Public Library. Come in, put a trivia team together for a trivia benefit this Friday. Come and join our three-branch scavenger hunt. Thank a librarian or just enjoy the space. Let's show up for our libraries, because our libraries have always shown up for us. Happy National Library.
All right, council, would you like to join for the photos? Next up on our agenda is our Consent Calendar. City Clerk, please, am I supposed to read this or you?
Okay, I will go ahead and read the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number four, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number five, Boards and Commissions Establish Annual Appointment Subcommittee. Item number six, Stoning Code Amendments to Implement General Plan Ballot Measure T Ordinance Adoptions. Item number seven, Peninsula Heights North Phase 2, excuse me, 2,82988 Campus Drive Agreement. Item number eight, East 41st Place and Pacific Boulevard Trash Capture Project Amendment. Item number nine, On-Site Fueling Station Replacement and Canopy Addition Purchase and Construction Contracts. Item number 10, Citywide Small Trash Capture Project Contingent Construction Contracts. Item number 10, Citywide Small Trash Capture Project Contingency Reserve Increase. Item number 11, Marina Lagoon Vegetation and Water Quality Management Agreement. Item number 12, Gateway Park Pedestrian Bridge Replacement Project Bid Rejection. Item number 13, Enterprise Resource Planning Support Service Agreement. Item number 14, Temporary Standby Generator for Dale Avenue Pump Station Upgrade Contract Change Order. Item number 15, Consulting Recruitment Services Change Order. Item number 16, Mobile Parking Revenue Collection Amendment. Item number 17, San Mateo Public Library Foundation Operating Lease Amendment. Item number 18, SEIU Local 521 Maintenance Side Letter of Agreement Regarding Salary Increase Adoption. And finally, item number 19, San Mateo Management Employees Association Memorandum of Understanding Amendments.
Thank you. Before I ask my fellow counsel if they wish to pull an item from the consent calendar, I would like to remind everyone that for item five, Boards and Commissions Establish Annual Appointment Subcommittee, if further requests to participate on an appointment subcommittee are desired, this would be the time to make the request. Because everyone had a chance to look at the calendar.
Through the mayor--
Yes.
I would like to comment on number five.
Okay.
That's what I--
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, she can go first.
Okay. Yes, if possible, I would like to join interviews for SNI, CRC, Planning, and Parks and Rec.
Okay.
I would like to, if possible, is it possible for all council members to invite it to be participate? Since they're judicial bodies, could we have all council members have the option of joining in planning and SNI interviews? I think those are probably-- I don't, I don't think we do.
Yeah, we do. We do. This is when you say you want to be--
Oh, please add me to SNI and Planning.
Right?
And through the mayor, what I may do just to assist this conversation is share-- this is individual feedback I've received from council members directly on the default subcommittees and proposed subcommittee amendments. So what you see in column D on your screen there is the proposed committee members for each of our subcommittees.
And through the mayor, if I may add--
Yes, of course.
If three or more council members wish to be, say, an interview panel for any particular commission, that's fine. It would just be noticed as a special meeting of the City Council.
Okay.
So-- I believe I captured everyone's--
Looks like we're gonna have a lot of notices.
Absolutely. Everybody happy? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, through the mayor. I can't use that phrase. I'm sorry. Through the mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
I just want to thank Martin and your whole crew for being so flexible with the scheduling and just being generally awesome because this is sort of a new protocol as we interview and re-interview commissioners. And so I just want to thank your team for the hard work you've done in getting this all set up for us.
I would also like to acknowledge that normally the mayor attends all of them, and unfortunately, I had to beg off on two of them, so I appreciate people standing in my place.
Apologies. Martin, lines six and seven for SNI, can you just clarify because the names are different?
So for SNI, it is, Councilmember Diaz Nash is not available on May 14, but is available on May 15. I'm holding those two dates because we are recruiting for youth commissioners for Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission. So depending on the number of applications we receive, we may modify those two dates. We may just have one date and consolidate. So this is just to note that Councilmember Diaz Nash is available on May 15, but not May 14.
Great. Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry.
No problem.
Sorry. Did any of the other council members--
Please.
I was wondering if we could talk-- I think this is the time to talk about civic arts. Just wondering, is it possible to establish term limits on the civic arts or just kind of eliminate it?
So staff received that feedback during a prior study session of the City Council when we were reviewing our Boards and Commissions Demography Study. So staff will be bringing back a discussion item for the City Council, most likely in the late summer, early fall, to review the Civic Arts Committee composition, including term limits.
Is elimination an option?
We may need to discuss that at that time, once we bring that to the council for discussion.
Thank you. I'd like to make sure that's an option. Thank you.
Okay. Well, with all this being said, are there any-- is there a member of the council who would like to pull any item from the consent calendar? Oh. Is any member of the public who wishes to comment on a consent calendar item, now would be the time for you to make a comment. This is for consent calendar items only. Is there any interest?
Mayor Newsom, I have not received any requests to speak in chamber on the consent calendar, and I have no hands raised in Zoom.
Okay. Is there a motion from the council to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Please call roll.
Certainly. Councilmember Diaz Nash--
Yes.
Councilmembers Sverko Kuditsky--
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez--
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine--
Yes.
And Mayor Newsom.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the City Council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to for staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. Mr. Clerk, could you please tally the total number of requests to speak on general public comment?
Or certainly, Mayor Newsom, in council chambers, I have three requests to speak. Currently, no hands raised in Zoom. If you wish to speak on an item not on the agenda, please raise your hand. Now, I will give you just a few moments to do so. Mayor Newsom, that is three requests to speak. So per council adopted rules and procedures, that would be a total of three minutes per speaker.
Fantastic. Thank you.
So we'll invite up Trina Pierce will be our first speaker, followed by Judy Hendricks and Olivia McNally.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and council members. My name is Trina Pierce, of course, and I am now president of the North Central Neighborhood Association, which I am proud of because most of the residents wanted that. So and from being that and from being and putting out all those yellow highlighted things that everybody's seen, the neighbors are really speaking. And if that's the way they speak up, they are showing it by putting in their yard. But there are some still that live alone, are seniors, 70, 80 years old. They don't want to put a sign up, but they want to be heard. So and what I hear most of the time is what I've already heard. Why did they do it in North Central? And the answer is we always, they always say, we know why. Would you have went up to some of those other neighborhoods and stolen 200 parking spaces? No, you wouldn't have. So this is something that people are saying to me, and it just, it makes me feel bad. I'm trying to build a relationship with a lot of these people I don't know. I want them to build a relationship with the city, be able to come up here and talk. But they're scared, and they're scared of retaliation. So I'm just asking that now let's make it right. Let's please listen to these people. Some of them are very scared, but they're willing to come because they want their parking back. They don't care if it's a shared bike lane or a bike boulevard. But I'm trying to convince them a bike boulevard because we'll get the speed bumps that North Central has been asking for for so long. Speed bumps and, you know. So I just want you guys to just think about them, they're seniors. We know during COVID, for them to stay in their homes is not a good thing. But legally, that's what your guys are telling them. Because if they don't get out at a certain time, they don't leave. I mean, they don't leave because when they come back, there's nowhere to park. And then we hear all these other comments. Why don't they stay in their parking spots? Why don't they go in their garages? Why don't they park in their places? Well, you know what? You think about it. Would you want your daughter getting off from work at 12 and 1 o'clock in the morning and walking down the street? So no, they keep it open for them. But you know, some of these people are supposed to be so intelligent. Think about why they're not parking in their spots. So I just asked you guys to do the right thing. We already know the funds were misappropriated in the first place. Do the right thing. And these people have said, we will go out and paint the streets black, and then you guys can come in and paint the white and all that. Those neighbors have said that I can give you a petition that's, you know, everybody said, that's a good idea, Trina. We'll go paint it black. We'll have a party. So we'll paint it for free. We go pick up garbage in North Central, and then recology comes and picks up all the garbage. So why can't we paint it black? That'll save some money, and everybody will be happy. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Judy Hendricks, followed by Olivia McNally.
I just want to say that we really need our parking back. We really need it. I'm handicapped, and I just feel like we just need our parking back because we don't have nowhere to park. With bike lanes, where we gonna park our cars at? For the handicapped people. You know, I mean, I just wish you guys would just think about it. You know, just think about your families not having nowhere to park. That's not fair, you know? And it's just-- I don't like it. I'm handicapped, and it's just, it's just not fair. It's just not fair, and it's-- I just wish you guys just think about it, you know? Because we need our parking back, you know? I mean, I don't care about the bike lanes, but what about our parking? Can we, can we share parking, our bike lanes or something like that? Have so many bike lanes and they have so many parkings? You know, this don't take away all the parking. That's, I just don't think that's fair. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. And our final speaker for general public comment will be Olivia McNally.
Good evening again, Mayor Newsom, council. I'm Olivia McNally. I am the Shoreview Parkside Neighborhood Association President. Two concerns here. One is, is I am trying to build a community over in the East Side, and it's very hard to do when I don't have a rec room that I can afford to hold community meetings. The last time we had a community meeting, it was approximately $300 out of my own pocket. I've raised this awareness, and I was told that this was going to be an agenda item in the April meeting. I don't see it. I have been in contact with Joanne. Joanne still doesn't have an answer after two months of emails, and I was just told a few days ago that they will not charge me, but then I will be charged once they finalize a fee. Well, I'm not gonna sign up to hold community events not knowing how much I'm gonna pay. So at approximately $300 and four times a year, that is $1,200 out of my pocket to help our community build on the East Side. That's topic number one. Topic number two is I live on a very beautiful street that I paid over $1 million to live on, and my children can't go out my front gate because cars are flying 60-plus miles per hour, zipping through our neighborhood. And this is a conversation in which all of our neighbors have had over and over and over again. I have written multiple letters over the last couple of years with no response. There has been nobody out to do a speed assessment on our streets. I have multiple neighbors around the Parkside Elementary School that have been calling me on my personal cell phone for the last two years asking for help. I now need your help. We need your help. Why is the East Side not getting the help we need? Please help us.
Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
If I may, through the mayor, just make a comment. So later tonight, I'm gonna be careful because it's on the agenda. There is a fiscal year 2025-2026 comprehensive fee schedule where I will be bringing things up. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda. We'll close public comment and move on to our public hearing part of the meeting. First thing up is the item 20, Fiscal Year 2025-26 Comprehensive Fee Schedule Approval. And we're gonna have a presentation from Carly Toffey, Senior Management Analyst, and Karen Hwan, the Finance Director. While they're coming up, the recommendation will be to adopt a resolution to approve the revisions to the proposed fiscal year 2025-26 Comprehensive Fee Schedule. Welcome, Carly. Welcome, Karen.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and members of the City Council. My name is Carly Toffey. I'm the Senior Management Analyst with the Finance Department. Joining me is Suzette Silberman, the Business Manager of the Parks and Recreation Department. The item before you is the annual public hearing for the revisions to the comprehensive fee schedule. Annually, sorry, this is the annual revisions to the comprehensive fee schedule. Public notice was given on March 25th and March 28th of this year. Fees are reviewed annually and are typically increased by Bay Area Consumer Price Index, or CPI, which was 2.4% this year. Fees are cost recovery and not to exceed the costs of providing the service. And as a reminder, sewer service fees are not part of this revision process. The changes I've highlighted for you include new fees, fees increased in excess of CPI, reduced fees and eliminated fees. Generally, new fees are for new services or existing services we had not previously charged for. Like in the case of our small wireless facility permits, appeal fee. More details on this fee can be found in Title 17, Chapter 10 of the San Mateo Municipal Code. Fees that are increased in excess of CPI are usually due to increases such as the salary schedule increases, such as the police department's outside detail rates. Some of the fees that were reduced this year include various parking fees and fees that were eliminated, like in the case of the Finance Department's new business fire inspection fee. This, this fee is charged and set by the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Suzette. Thank you very much. We are really excited, Parks and Rec is really excited to bring this to you. We've been working, as you can see, for quite some time. In April of 2022, we engaged a consultant to do a cost of service analysis. And as part of that, we ranked and categorized our areas of service and our-- What? I forget what this is called. You'll see it later. Anyways, we have also taken this multiple times to our Parks and Recreation Commission and to our Senior Commission, most recently in February and March of this year. So this is kind of the heart and meat of this idea. Previously, in the fee schedule, there was very detailed ways of calculating how we addressed our activity fees for Parks and Recreation. So think Zumba, think ceramics, or summer camps. We have moved to this idea of a common good versus an individualized good rather than martial arts as being a category. And we subsidize martial arts to a certain rate, but we decide that we're only gonna subsidize art classes, you know, a little bit, but we're gonna subsidize martial arts. Now, these, any class can kind of go along this spectrum versus like if it's a very advanced class--
advanced class, there is more expectation of recovering costs. And then if it is a less, more beginner-friendly class, maybe we want to make that more widely available to the public, more a common good. Obviously, there are certain things like parks that are just completely a common good. They're, they're for everyone. And other things like human services that we highly subsidize as well. And it gives staff a lot of flexibility to place things in different categories without saying that one type of activity is better than another. As part of this, we, we also have developed a pricing tool which empowers staff and has all of this data from that cost of service behind it to price their activities without a lot of extra time and effort, which, under our previous model, we had to spend a lot of backend staff time calculating these sorts of things. And this is just the final words we're going to leave you with, is that the City of San Mateo Parks and Recreation Department's Financial Sustainability Strategy intends to create organizational resilience by way of logical, intentional, and thoughtful guidelines for investment and spending decisions. The strategy encourages revenue generation strategies and practices that are fair, equitable, and responsible. In that our last time we have updated these kinds of fees was in 2004. This is a long overdue update and I think will make staff happy and also hopefully create more dynamic Parks and Recreation activities.
And with that, we'd like to thank you for your time tonight. We're happy to field any questions you have on this item.
Okay, thank you. Well, before we do that, we will open it up to public comment. Is there anyone wishing to have public comment on this matter?
Mayor Newsom, no request to speak in chambers and no request to speak via Zoom.
Okay, then we will close public comment and open it up to questions, comments, and motion from the council. Okay, I yield to Councilwoman Swirko Guditsky.
I don't mean to go first every time. So we just heard from one of our neighborhood presidents. As you guys know, neighborhood associations are critical to the vibrancy of this community. And so I would like to propose a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025-26 comprehensive fee schedule, except that recreation center facility staffing fees and any hourly surcharges shall not be charged to nonprofits for neighborhood association meetings as approved by the Parks and Rec Director until such a time as a city policy will be created to address this matter in more detail. And as Olivia noted, the reason I'm motioning for that is because there have been a few neighborhood association groups that have come forward and there's a little bit of inconsistency in the pricing. And so I want to make sure that that's examined and that we're being fair and equitable across the city.
Great. Yep, please.
I support Councilmember Swirko Guditsky's motion, but I would like to make sure that if we are comping or if we are, you know, providing that, there must be a city purpose for the meeting. I think if we're going to have, it's fine if we have language moving forward, but there needs to be city purpose and there needs to be like cities, there has to be like a city staffer present for, to talk about some like public, some city-related issue, I think, for just because we have, we're all about communications and outreach and I think that that's essential to what we do.
Through the mayor, if I can just address that last point. So what you would be doing is making a decision on the type of organization that would not have to pay fees or reduce fees, not on what they say during the meeting. Because I think that's, that's kind of hard to police, that's hard to administer. And you don't want to necessarily charge entities based on what they speak about when they're renting a room. So I think what I heard in the motion was to not charge, I think it's nonprofits or neighborhood associations.
Nonprofits for neighborhood.
Or, I think it's the or. It's both nonprofits or neighborhood associations.
Recognize, have it recognized neighborhood associations?
Well, in the motion, I think you referenced the Parks and Rec Director. So that's sort of built into that, that it's recognized neighborhood associations.
So if I can provide some context, for example, the Shoreview Parkside Neighborhood Association, when it was first started two years ago, was being charged $25. As you heard tonight, the neighborhood president referenced 300. In North Central, another neighborhood association and group has said that, you know, they were asked to pay liability insurance. And so, you know, I think it's important that until we have a clear framework, that we just have an addendum here that motions that nonprofits and neighborhood associations, as approved by the Parks and Rec Director, so these are established groups that are recognized by the city, that we don't charge them until we have a framework in place.
So that guardrail is fine. I just want to make sure that like any Joe Bob can't come up with a neighborhood association and just be asking us for free facilities.
So if you go on, if you go on the city website, these are recognized neighborhood associations.
As long as they appear on that list, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Before we, sorry.
I'm sorry, Rob. Would it be helpful for me to read the motion again?
Well, I think we may want to have other people have other questions before we move on to that. So does anyone else have any other questions? Oh, Adam, please.
So I guess I'm just trying to wrap my head around what's being proposed. And I wonder if this is something that staff has a reply to? Is it something that could maybe come back to us?
So what we have found is that right now, the way the code, the way the previous approval has been, is that we do charge the nonprofit rates for our neighborhood associations to have meetings at our recreational facilities. Where we have to charge more money is that there's certain rec facilities or certain neighborhood associations. Let's give an example of Shoreview Parkside. There is the Shoreview Community Center, but it's not always attended by staff. There's no staff attendant always there. But if the neighborhood wants to meet, we have to go ahead then, send out a staff member to open up the facility just for that meeting. And that's where that $300 cost that you heard from the speaker earlier this evening comes into play. What Councilmember Swirko Guditsky is hoping to amend in this overall fee schedule is to put basically a limited term, have the council ask to have this change where we will not charge nonprofits or neighborhood associations who are having meetings at these facilities for that extra cost of staffing in order to open up that facility. Because what you basically have is that if we have a Parkside, Shoreview neighborhood association meeting, they don't, I don't think it'd be great for them to go all the way across town to the west side to another rec facility that's open during that time. It's not conducive, it's not good for the environment, for transportation. And we're really, it's counterintuitive, honestly. We're trying to build community and make it easier for neighbors to get together and talk about issues that are impacting them in their neighborhood or the city. And that's why it's a neighborhood association meeting, is what I heard from Councilmember Swirko Guditsky as being able to waive that. And in addition, our Parks and Rec Director will be then working on certain guidelines and build out a whole policy in this area to administer this program moving forward. This is just a stopgap measure right now that's being proposed. And it would solve the issue of neighborhood associations getting charged $300 or the sure, we've heard from a number of different groups on these issues.
And it would also solve the public perception issue. That was a great recap, that certain lower-income communities are being charged less than wealthier neighborhoods. Charged more, correct, excuse me, charged more than wealthier neighborhoods in San Mateo.
Okay. Next time, please let me yield the floor because Deputy Mayor Lorraine was still speaking.
Thank you. No further questions.
Okay. I have a few questions. I know that most of our rooms are available through the Park and Rec, but I also know that we have community rooms in our library. We have a community room in our police department. We theoretically will have a community room in our new wastewater treatment plant. Will these fees adhere to the same schedule?
So there are different fees for the different facilities. Like I believe, Chief, we don't charge for our community room at the police department, correct?
Yep.
We don't, we don't charge. At the library, right now, if you're a nonprofit for rentals at the library, the Oak Room is $205 for the first four hours plus $30 for each additional hour. And then at Laurel and Cedar, in those rooms, it's $110 for the first four hours and $20 for each additional hours. And this is for the staff time and for the room rental rate itself. So if you want to use a recreational facility, that's where this kind of amendment is. The library, all the others are listed in the schedule itself.
I just wonder if when we do move forward with a fee schedule, if we don't try to standardize it specifically for neighborhood associations. So then a neighborhood association that's in close proximity to the police department doesn't get a free ride, whereas someone in Shoreview or Central has, North Central has to pay a higher, a higher price.
So what we would have to do is look holistically at all our city facilities and then come back and bring back an item. We'd also have to cost that out overall. And I'd have to bring back basically to let the council know exactly how much income that, or revenue that is created that we would then in kind cover for that type of service. I'm seeing nodding heads, two, three, four, five. Okay, we'll go ahead and we'll work on, we'll work on something, bring something back. But in the meantime, at least as a stopgap measure, this is the friendly proposal that your Councilmembers.
Please don't take this as I'm not supporting the proposal. I do like this idea. I just want to make sure that we look at it holistically for all sites. I also know that recently we found a kind of underutilized community room at Trinity Park. Have we identified if there are other potential community, you know, resources that are not being maybe open to the public?
So what we have is we've been doing facility assessments and there are certain locations that different nonprofits, like the Little League, might be utilizing certain facilities and might have a licensing agreement and they have the, they can only use, it's like the Garden Center too. So we have, or the Arboretum. So we have different city real property that we bring to the council for lease approvals. And so those are limited on who can access those spaces. Now, we've just brought on new staff that's going to help us with our real property assets. And so this is another area of another project that we'll get to, but there's a long list of projects that we have coming before us at this moment. But it is a really good thing to bring up and something that we are going to be looking into in the near future as well.
Great. That sounds great. I know we said the fire new business permit fee is still going to be a fee, we're just removing it from our fee schedule. I was just curious, do we have a link on our business site that redirects them to the, the fire department, the JPA?
I believe we do. I believe there's a link directly to their fee schedule in our fee schedule. I'll confirm that. But yes, we should have a link there.
I just want to make sure if we're pulling it from one place, that we're not making it harder to find, that we, we kind of give a bridge to where it can be found.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then I guess the last question for the Park and Rec team would be, do we, do we do a study of what activities are heavily utilized and which ones maybe are underutilized and try to find ways to increase programming where there is demand?
It has been, there's been increasing demand ever since 2020, right? So we had a really stark drop off and increasing demand. We are in, we are in discussion with these same consultants to kind of help us create a framework holistically to make that easier versus having it be a, you know, more tools in our toolbox to do that. So that's, that's definitely something that our new Recreation Community Services Manager is looking into. And then to the earlier conversation about holistic fees, we actually, we've been working on this fee in Parks and Recreation and have actually already had a, a little bit of a conversation with Rochana at the library about facility fees and how, where we're going. So it's definitely, all of the comments are on the radar in, in our department as far as what we're working on.
Fantastic. Yeah, the only other comment I would have along those lines is, you know, my daughters are teenagers now, but I remember how crazy it was to try to get a park and rec like summer camp spot. And I think probably swim lessons might be in that same boat. And so I just wonder if, you know, we can look at making sure we're utilizing more resources, hiring now my teenage students to help be camp counselors because they're all looking for summer jobs. But I'm just wondering if we couldn't increase, you know, increase the, when there's increased demand.
Yeah, it's definitely something we're, we're looking to do. And we have been increasing our offerings, but yeah, definitely ramping that up with a more targeted, more data-centered.
Fantastic. Well, thank you. That's great feedback. Does anyone else have any other comments?
Just one comment. I actually think it's appropriate that we're talking about this in the waiver right now because it's very much in keeping with the philosophy behind your fee schedule. The things that are more, you know, widely available, they should be easier to access from a price perspective. And things that are more specialized and advanced, you look at different fees. So I, for one more reason, I would support it.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, then I know we need to have a motion. Can we have, can you please, yes, sorry. Can you, can you read your motions or your addendum to the motion?
Addendum to the, to the motion. Motion to approve the fiscal year 2025-26 comprehensive fee schedule, except that recreation center facility, facility staffing fees and any hourly surcharges shall not be charged for nonprofits or neighborhood association meetings as approved by the Parks and Recreation Director until such a time as a city policy will be created to address this matter in more detail.
Second.
Okay. Please take a roll.
Councilmember Swirko Guditsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine.
Yes.
Mayor Newsom.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you so much for a great presentation. Keep up the great work. Moving along, item 21, Status of Vacancies: Recruitment and Retention Efforts Based on Assembly Bill 2561, Government Code 3502.3, Public Hearing. It will be presented by Aracelia Esparza, our Director of Human Resources. Welcome, Aracelia. I guess while she's setting up, the recommendation will be to conduct a public hearing in accordance with Government Code Section 3502.3, Assembly Bill 2561, to present the status of vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts in advance of the adoption of an annual budget.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and Councilmembers. The purpose of my presentation is to present the status of vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts for the city. I'm going to start by providing a quick overview of AB 2561. Then I will present citywide information, including an overview of our workforce, vacancy and recruitment information, the hiring challenges we are facing, and suggestions on how to address these challenges, and citywide retention information. Then I will present vacancy information per bargaining unit. Challenges with job vacancies in the public sector has, has been building slowly before 2020 and it became worse during the COVID-19 pandemic. According to the UC Berkeley Labor Center, vacancy rates were reported in counties and cities as high as 20% to 30% in 2022 and 2023. As a result, public workers face heavier workloads and mandatory overtime. AB 2561 aims to address the challenges with vacancies in the public sector, requiring annual disclosures of workforce data. Assembly Bill 2561 became effective on January of this year. This bill requires public agencies to make public hearing presentations before the Governing Board on an annual basis prior to the budget being approved. During this presentation, the following must be included. The status of vacancies, recruitment and retention efforts, and any necessary changes to policies, procedures, and recruitment activities that may lead to obstacles in the hiring process. activities that may lead to obstacles in the hiring process. If the vacancy rate is 20% or more in a bargaining unit, the following information on this slide must also be presented. I am pleased to report that all bargaining units in the city have vacancy rates below The City of San Mateo has 548 full-time equivalent positions with 168 different job classifications. 96% of our workforce is represented by one of the seven unions/associations listed on this slide. As you could see, the majority of our employees are represented by the San Mateo Cities Employees Association with 28%, followed by the San Mateo Management Employees Association and Police Sergeants Unit with 22%, followed by SEIU Maintenance with 19%. In 2024, the city created a total of 15 new positions. Seven out of the 15 are in the Public Works Department, and five of these positions are represented by SEIU. In 2024, we filled a total of 140 positions. We've been busy. As of January 27, 2025, we had a total of 63 vacancies. The number of vacancies fluctuate every month, therefore, we had to select a date and time for this presentation. As of January 27, 2025, our vacancy rate was 11.5. I am pleased to report that our current vacancy rate has decreased to 9.8%. This slide represents vacancies per department. Again, we had a total of 63 positions. The majority of city vacancies are in the Public Works Department with 41% of the total vacancies, and Parks and Recreation Department with 24%. Since then, there has been progress in filling positions in both departments. Although the police department reflects 12 vacancies, most of these vacancies were in the process of being filled. Again, our current vacancy rate is 9.8%. In 2024, we filled a total of 140 positions using the different methods of appointments: existing eligible lists, ongoing recruitments, external/internal recruitments, internal-only recruitments, and flexibly staffed. On this slide, we have the number of vacancies filled and the average number of calendar days it took to fill vacancies per method of appointment. I do want to point out that we experienced some challenges with gathering the data on the average number of days to be filled, as the Eden system used in 2024 was not automated, and the data was captured manually. Also, I want to note that the reasons for the delay in filling certain positions were due to positions being placed on hold for various reasons, including positions being reviewed, reorganizations, and individuals working out of class. As you could see, it takes a longer time to fill vacancies when opening an external/internal recruitment. The average number of days, calendar days to fill these vacancies were, were 225 days for external/internal recruitments. We had a total of five flexibly staff appointments. Flexibly staff appointments are when an employee is hired into a series and they promote to the higher level after a period of time. Therefore, the average number of calendar days to fill these positions is not applicable. Now I'm going to review the hiring process, and I'll try and make it as quickly as possible. Once a vacancy is created, the hiring manager submits a recruitment requisition to fill the position. Once approved, the recruitment method is determined and advertisement begins. Applications are screened for minimum qualifications. The majority of our examinations are oral only, however, we do have some that may have a written and/or a performance component. Those that pass the examinations are placed on the eligible list. The hiring manager will interview and select from this list. A conditional job offer is made to the selected candidate pending background and medical clearances. Once all has cleared, an official offer is made and the candidate is provided with a start date. Okay, we initiated a review of policies, procedures, and recruitment activities to identify potential challenges in the hiring process. Some of these challenges are outlined: lack of human resources staff in recruitment, a delay in the recruitment examination and selection process due to various factors, including background checks, clearances, and reorganizations, need to enhance our recruitment and outreach plans and activities to make them more modern and attractive. Salaries for some benchmark classifications were not at median in 2024. However, during contract negotiations, salaries for several benchmark classifications were brought up to median. For example, a total of 67 positions represented by SEIU were provided equity adjustments in addition to the cost of living adjustments and across-the-board 2% equity adjustments. Some of the suggestions to address these challenges are as follows: request additional human resources positions; review each phase of the recruitment and selection process to identify challenges and make recommendations to streamline the processes; identify hard-to-recruit positions; enhance recruitment plans and outreach efforts; and develop partnership to build pipelines for city positions. Meet and confer with all bargaining units to discuss survey methodology to be used for future contract negotiations; and continue to set salaries for benchmark classifications to median on the, based on the total compensation survey during contract negotiations when feasible. Develop a formal employee recognition and rewards program to motivate and retain employees. And as we all know, unfortunately, the city is unable to address cost of living and inflation. We had a total of 121 vacancies in 2024. 12% of these vacancies were due to staffing growth. We had 15 newly budgeted positions. 40% was due to internal opportunities. This is great. The city promoted 45 internal employees and transferred three employees. 12% was due to attrition. We had 12 retirements and two involuntary separations. 36% of the 121 vacancies are due to turnover or voluntary separations. Here we see the vacancy rate per bargaining unit as of January 27, 2025. The Police Sergeants Unit, Safety Management, Management Association, and SEIU Library had no vacancies. For the San Mateo Management Employees Association, 18 out of 114 positions were vacant. This was a 15.8 vacancy rate for this association. Police Officers Association had a vacancy rate of 7.3%. San Mateo Cities Employees Association, 12.2%. And SEIU Maintenance, 18.4%. As of February 28, SEIU Maintenance vacancy rate was at 13.6%. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
My understanding is that we now have an employee organization presentation.
Yeah, Mayor Newsom, if, if it pleases the council, I may just, because this is a very specialized public hearing, different from how we typically do it, I can just kind of run through the order of operations.
That'd be great.
So we, right now, we will have a presentation from Jesse Dolan representing SEIU. Following that, we will go to questions, comments, feedback from the city council. We will then go to final city comments, so our human resources director will have an opportunity to respond. And then we will have an opportunity, following that, for final employee organization comments, which is limited to three minutes. And then following that, we will have individual public comment. So we will now invite up Jesse Dolan to begin our organized SEIU presentation.
Welcome, Jesse.
Right there. Aracelia, I'd like a lot what you said, Aracelia. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the retention and turnover issues in the city. First, I would like to recognize the progress that Alex and Aracelia have made over the past year. They have done an amazing job hiring new employees and filling longstanding vacancies. This is no small task, and the effort should be recognized. Our goal with this presentation is to focus on retaining those that we have hired. One more, please. Thank you. The city is struggling to retain people. Those that we have hired, those that have been hired do not remain with the city very long, with the median length of employment in the unit being five years. This is particularly a bad problem at the treatment plant with a turnover rate of 50%, where the majority of employees have less than four years of tenure. This is not a sustainable business model. Why do people leave? The two most common reasons people leave the City of San Mateo are low pay and long commutes. According to Forbes, San Mateo County is the fifth most expensive county in the U.S. The City of San Mateo is a very expensive place to live, and not a single member of the maintenance unit can be considered middle-income. We cannot live in the city where we work. With other nearby cities paying better wages, the City of San Mateo is failing to address the high cost of living. Why work in San Mateo when you can work at Hayward or San Leandro, earning more money with a shorter commute? Excellent. This failure to retain employees is more costly to the City of San Mateo than the cost of increasing employee salaries. The cost per hire for the city tends to be two to three times what the city would spend to increase the worker's salary and retain said worker. When we lose workers, we lose critical institutional knowledge and experience. In fact, the high turnover rate at the plant was so bad that the city needed to resort to hiring outside contractors due to operators leaving for better salaries. The city can afford to pay its people. Half of the employees in the maintenance unit are paid out of the enterprise fund, which has unrestricted funds in excess of $160 million. Should the city decide to be truly competitive and give the unit a 10% raise, it would amount to 12.5% of that unrestricted fund over 20 years. The general fund and the enterprise fund are both seeing double-digit increases over the past five years. We would like to see some of those funds go to supporting the families of the people who keep the city running. How do we fix this? Salary increases. The most immediate thing the city can do is give the maintenance unit a 2.5% salary increase, as is allowed in Article 14 of the MOU. This increase is modest, but will help bring members to median and demonstrate the city's willingness to address the retention problem in a meaningful way. Additionally, we could rise above the median. Some cities, such as Palo Alto, go to the 75th percentile. Should we do the same, it would make the City of San Mateo truly competitive, and we will significantly reduce turnover. Another thing we can do is housing for city employees. The increasingly long commutes of workers can be reduced. We have people driving from as far as Salinas. The housing market has pushed city employees farther away, farther and farther away. Barracks or something similar will help. Another thing, childcare. Other cities offer, offer childcare. I know, as a father of a two-month-old, that the cost of childcare is a significant source of stress. Next slide, I think.
That's the last one.
That's the last one. Okay, good. Thank you for listening, and I do want to point out that the union has seen a change in culture from the city recently. We have seen more effort to respond to members' needs, and we appreciate the change in tone from the one that existed previously. Things are less contentious. The union hopes that the spirit of cooperation and professionalism continues, and that we can work together to make the City of San Mateo the best city in which to work and live. Thank you.
Okay. Who wants to go first? Please.
Thank you, through the mayor. Director Esparza, thank you for your presentation. And I just had a question about, could you remind me maybe whether the city has a target related to vacancy percentage, whether, and I don't know whether we have like a general one, or whether it might vary per unit or department?
Are you speaking in terms of what our targeted vacancy rate might be?
Yeah, I, I, is there, I mean, I, I imagine, I guess, like, maybe, maybe I should be more specific, but over the next year or two, do we have like a target?
Yes, we have a goal. One of our initiatives is to bring the vacancy rate down to 6%, hopefully in the next year. And we're getting close. We're at 9.8.
Thank you very much. No further questions at this time.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Thank you through the mayor, and thank you, Aracelia, and thank you for the presentation, Jesse. And I'm glad that the feeling is that the city is working better and more positive, and there's more cooperation, because that has definitely been an emphasis and a priority for staff and for the city council. So we have a long way to go, but we are, we are working on it. So I'm glad that's, that's being felt. Aracelia, I had, just generally, I know when we were going through negotiations last year, there was a lot of discussion about how we compared ourselves and which cities we compared ourselves to. Where do we stand now, and what's the plan going forward, so that there is a, a common agreement as to how do we compare ourselves?
Thank you. That's a very good question. And now that we are finished with contract negotiations, our next meeting confer is to do a re-opener to look at the survey methodology, where we're going to be looking at the different jurisdictions, the different factors to be considered in the surveys moving forward, so we could bring some consistency citywide with all the union organizations. Once we finalize that meeting confer, the goal is to have agreement with all the respective unions, and in preparation for upcoming negotiations, we would use that, use that methodology. And hopefully that will expedite, hopefully, the contract negotiations, because we will agree ahead of time in terms of what should be included.
Yeah. Wonderful. That cannot happen fast enough. And then, you know, the other question, I know that the, the presentation talked about housing as a real issue. And I know I'm part of the HART board, which is focused on affordable housing in the county and has a real focus on workforce housing. So I would very much encourage the city to work closely with HART, and any opportunity that does come up, that if it makes sense, that we should partner with the city manager.
So on that point, we will be meeting with the executive director of HART here in the next month to talk about, they have a new framework for workforce housing development, and so it's something that I'll be all ears to, to, you know, hear about the overall approach. Additionally, just when we talk about housing overall, we do have a BMR program citywide, and a lot of our employees, I've actually signed over grantee documents for housing for employees who will throw in, if they qualify, income-qualify. They go through a whole process, and I believe it is kind of like a draft or a raffle for the housing unit itself. And so there are approaches. The other piece that we're looking at too is also the, talked about the barracks as well, about opportunity. I know that the police department has the location over there off of Norfolk. And so that is something that I've asked the public works director to connect with the chief on as well, to talk about if there's opportunity for allowing our public works employees to be able to spend the night here in town, understanding that there are long miles to travel to and from their home to work.
Particularly if there's an emergency going on.
Yes. And then additionally, we have Kiku, who just, that just came online. It's the big 225-unit affordable housing development downtown. That also allowed for, it was the emphasis on actual workforce housing and for government employees or city employees to be able to get in the process to apply for those housing units, if it's income-qualified. So what's difficult is, is you'll see, it happens with teachers, or it could happen with city workers. If you have you and your spouse making a really good, you know, making a decent salary, it's, you know, it could be $80,000 to $90,000 if you have two, then you're not income-qualifying for those units. And so it's been a little bit more difficult and challenging to get those units directly to, I'd say, government staff members. It's usually on a single income that are qualified for those units.
Yeah. And what I would say, in addition to everything, and thank you for the update, is that to make sure, as part of your focus on education, communication, that everyone knows the opportunities that are there. Yeah, because that's, you know, that, I was not even, I wasn't aware of everything you told me just now, so, thank you. So those are my, my comments, but keep going. So those are my, my comments, but keep going.
Okay. Please. Thank you.
I want to thank, I want to thank Aracelia for the great presentation and Jesse for speaking up as well. And always proud that Jesse is a resident of my district, so thank you for that. And I'm, I love that the fact that you guys feel like the tone of the city is more friendlier, and I, I love that. I was wondering if we could discuss if we've ever very seriously considered some sort of childcare stipend as a benefit? I know we can't do a COLA, but is there anything that we can do for these working families that need childcare?
I'm going to go ahead and refer to Alex. I believe we are doing a couple of things right now, right, Alex?
Well, it's something that we're looking at, and I know, I appreciate SCIU going ahead and pointing out the Redwood City model. I went ahead and we reached out to the human resources director, and I reached out to my counterpart over there. This is very new for them in Redwood City, so it's not, you know, something that's been going on for a very long time. Actually, it was just in their latest round of negotiations. And so this is an item that would come up, I would say, from a proposal from SCIU during negotiations about opportunity. And basically what you have is, the example in Redwood City is that they have their parks and rec program. They do have childcare programs, and they'll allow their staff kind of have a first shot at the slots for childcare and give up to $500, a max $500, to provide a stipend for those childcare services as part of the city's childcare program. And that's the benefit that they're providing. This is very new, according to their human resources director. I think it's only a few months since it went in, went in place.
Can, can we serious, can we just get, download the info from them about that and just see if that's?
No, absolutely. But I think it's got to come up, because there's a cost to all of this.
Of course, of course.
And so it has come up during negotiations to discuss this item. But yes, it's something that we're looking at, different examples that are out there as opportunities.
Great. Thank you. And then the other question I had was with regard to what, just kind of piggybacking off what councilmember Diaz Nash said. City employees are part of the same raffle for those BMR units? Like as like just every other resident? Meaning like it's all the same raffle? Is that?
That's my understanding, that there's an affordable housing list. But correct me if I'm wrong, I'm looking at our assistant city manager, but I believe it's part of the overall affordable housing list.
I don't know the exact in and outs of how it works, but I think there is some priority given to public employees, like teachers, city employees. People in certain professions do get a certain priority on the BMR list. So do people who already, like, live and work in San Mateo. So we would have to look a little deeper to see exactly the mechanics of how that works. But there, there is a way that they prioritize the BMR list.
That's my question, is in absence of an economy that would allow us to do a COLA for our workers, is there anything that we can do specifically with the raffle just for city of San Mateo employees?
I don't believe it is for city of San Mateo employees specifically, because we don't own and operate all of those BMR units ourselves. We do have some that we do, but they're older. So the new ones that are coming online, they're operated by outside operators like MidPen or, you know, some of, some of the affordable housing nonprofits. So, so they're not ours to give away. But when we enter into partnerships, we do ask them to prioritize that kind of housing. The ones that we have, they're not specific for city of San Mateo, but city of San Mateo falls in those levels of priority.
Is it possible, given the large vacancy rate in particular units, that maybe we could do some prioritizing or talk to our nonprofit partners? To see if that's a possibility?
I'm not aware, it's a conversation we can have. I'm not aware-
That's all I'm asking, is it possible to have a conversation?
-of large vacancy rates for the affordable units. But that is something that, that we could look at and explore.
Okay. Thank you.
So the city does have a live-work preference, but that's for anyone who lives and works in the city. It's just not the city of San Mateo employees. And you're talking about specifically about the city of San Mateo. But I will put, I know that our community development director will be getting information out here soon. There's going to be another offering of wonderful new housing over at Pacific Heights. And so there's going to be a number of units that'll come online. So if you get on the affordable housing list, which the city does have, if you go on the city's website, you can sign up to get the information and sign yourself up for the list, and there's opportunities that will be coming down the pike. And that affordable housing list is really helpful, so that when we do have availability of units, there's an email message that goes out to everybody who has submitted themselves to, or have signed up for the list.
Thank you, Aracelia and Christina and Alex. Appreciate it.
Just a caveat, because I do have some comments, but I agree with the comments made by the council members so far. I do want to thank city staff for your presentation. And as an HR professional, I know how tough it is to fill roles and bring down the vacancy rate. And I really do appreciate all the hiring that's underway across the city of San Mateo. And, public service announcement, if you or someone you know is a federal employee who was recently laid off, the city of San Mateo is hiring. I would also like to thank the city employees who came to present to the council tonight to express their concerns. It's great to hear from you, and we appreciate it. I think it's very important for the public to understand that these workers are SCIU union members who often perform in difficult conditions to keep the inner workings of our city functioning. And frankly, these are really tough jobs that many others would not dare to take on. To our SCIU employees, I want you to know that I am sympathetic to your concerns, and I believe it would be wise for our city to be open-minded and continue to be open-minded about what you have to say. And to the council, we should definitely continue to listen, ask thoughtful questions, and we should look for opportunities to make progress where we can. So I'm happy to hear that, your comments, Nicole and Lisa and Adam. I also wanted to just echo that, for example, childcare benefits and sleeping quarters are a topic that come up frequently across departments. I do think there's a win opportunity here, and we should, you know, continue to explore that. At the end of the day, our SCIU employees are workers with key technical skills, and they have roles where experience and long-term tenure, excuse me, can be very critical in a pinch. So creating an environment where our employees spend their entire career, because we used to have that in San Mateo, working for the city should be an aspiration, and I would like us to continue to look at ways and consider ways for us to do more here to make that feasible. So thank you, guys.
Yes, please.
Thank you through the mayor. I did just want to acknowledge my, my council colleagues for their comments and SCIU for coming for this, this item. This is our first time doing this particular presentation, and I appreciate a unit coming and giving a presentation and giving us food for thought and ideas to, to work forward in partnership on. And I think I'm just trying to digest it a little bit, but I do think we have shared goals of trying to make the city the, the best it can be, and through that, having a place where people can live well and live and work here and so on. So I'm aligned, and I appreciate it.
Sure. Well, I just reiterate the same sentiment. I thank all of you guys for coming out. Thank you for your presentation. Couple of questions that I do have. One, the second-most vacancies was park and rec. Were those vacancies only specific to year-round vacancies? Or is some of that seasonal vacancies?
No, these were permanent merit positions.
Okay, great. Do you know how we are, well, we talked about that in our mind? The barracks. You know, we, we've been talking about the barracks for about a year and a half. It was one of the things that I actually had talked to about a year and a half ago with, when we were having storms again. And it seems like we're probably coming to the, hopefully, end of storm season for this year, so we've, yeah, hold on. I think we're making it through. That said, we could have an earthquake or a natural disaster at any time. And so I would like to make sure that we, we, we move along with this concept, because I think we've had nothing but support of this idea. So I would like to find out, can we have a commitment that by the next winter season that we have a plan in place?
So the commitment that I can at least provide is that I have our public works director here in the chambers. I have our chief of police in this chamber, and make sure that we have a discussion, and then we can provide an update to the council in our council weekly update, let you know how that goes.
Great. Thank you. Question about Kiku and below-market rates. Do, do we know if we had any city employees that have moved into Kiku?
I'd have to check with our housing staff and get back to the council. That's another thing we can look at and provide an update.
And I did hear that we have a city list, which is great, so that if people are looking for housing, we're actively engaging them, correct?
My understanding is that we do have an affordable, like I spoke to, we have, we have an email listserv, basically, where people can get information on housing opportunities.
Okay. Well, I'm in agreement with everything I've heard. I think, I think we're hearing a lot of creative solutions to work towards common problems, and, and I'm really glad to hear that everyone feels that we're working in good spirit with each other. So that's where I stand. Thank you. I have no additional questions.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we'll open it up to public comment. Before we do that, our public hearing, the order is that we take final comments from Director Esparza, and then we'll take final comments from SCIU, and then we'll open up to individual public comment. So we'll open it up for final city comments, three minutes, and then open it up to employee comments for three minutes.
So just final comments. I started about five months ago, and it's been a pleasure coming to the city of San Mateo. My goal is to make sure that we have one of the best HR departments and that we are able to, one, reduce our vacancy rate and make sure that we hire and retain talented and diverse individuals in our workplace. And I think we have a common goal, is to create this as a very healthy work environment for our employees, employees that want to stay with the city, and that we could develop our employees. So thank you for having me. Thank you for hiring me. And, you know, my goal again is to make sure that our HR programs and services are in alignment where with the city wants to go, and make sure that we help you accomplish your goals and initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wanted to say thank you. I was pretty nervous about all this in this session. It turned out to be a pretty good experience. So thank you, everyone, for, for hearing me and, and making this available to us. And everybody feels like we're on the same team, which is really nice. I want to just make a quick plug for an idea for the barracks in that the, the portable offices that are used, currently used by Jacobs for the construction project at the wastewater treatment plant, they are actually plumbed with electricity and everything. All you would need to do is put in a shower and some beds, and you would have your barracks. So real easy one. That's just a quick plug for that. Was there anything else I needed to go over? See, we don't even need showers. You just let us have it, and we will make it into housing, and it would be a great thing for some of those people who have the commutes from Gilroy and Salinas and Dublin. So, you know, that would definitely help keep people safe as well, so they don't have to drive after a 12-hour shift all night. So, all right. Think I'm done. Thank you.
Yeah. You're not getting any sleep. Now we will open it up to individual public comment. If you're interested in speaking in this item and attending in person, please provide me with a request to speak clip. If you are attending virtually, please raise your hand. Give you just a few moments to do so. Aaron Newsom, we have one request to speak. So the per-council adopted rules and procedures. We'll set the timer at three minutes per speaker. So we'll invite Julie Lin. Julie, please unmute your mic.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Good morning. Good morning. Oh, I'm home with a sick kid, so clearly we are all having some challenges today. All right. Good whatever time of day it is, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and staff. Thanks for giving me a few minutes of your time this evening. I'm sorry you couldn't be there in person because sick kid. But I'm Julie Lin with the San Mateo Labor Council, representing 103 affiliate unions and over 95,000 workers and their families countywide. I want to speak today about the pressing need to support our city employees, the people who keep San Mateo running safe and thriving. We're asking you to honor the 2.5% wage reopener and consider updating Article 14 of the agreement to bring the representative unit to the median market rate. The employees aren't asking to be above average, despite the fact that that's the performance they give, only to reach parity with their peers. But we understand a salary bump may be seen as untenable in this moment for a variety of reasons. But if that's the case, we urge you to continue to think creatively, as we've expressed tonight, about other ways to help our workers stay here and to help those workers stay committed to serving the city. Housing and childcare incentives are critical. Employees who live in San Mateo are more likely to stay long-term, and your BMR housing program is a great first step. We'd love to see expanded access and priority placement offered on the waiting list for city employees. And perhaps like to take it further, consider converting unused city facilities into housing options for city staff, making below the county's low-income threshold, including the barracks that the city manager mentioned, as well as your barracks idea that Jesse just solved, which is great. We really appreciate the council's expressed support. So let's look how we can work together to stop losing good workers to other cities just because they can't afford to live here. Childcare is another area where you can lead, and thank you, Councilwoman Fernandez, for your comments. Redwood City, as it was mentioned, offers subsidized childcare and first access to childcare slots for its employees. That's a smart investment in working families, and one we'd really like to see it scored seriously. The cost of childcare is a major factor in whether workers can afford to stay in the area. And finally, we need to convert our extra help employees into full-time workers. These folks have proven their value, and they deserve job security and benefits. When we treat our workers with fairness and respect, we offer or we foster loyalty, stability, and better service for everyone in San Mateo. Let's build a San Mateo where people want to work, but one where they can also afford to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment. Okay. We will now close public comment. Do we move on to new business? Okay. And we'll move on to new business. Item 22, general fund reserve policy review with presentation by Karen Huan. Before we do, we're going to take a five-minute bio break and be back at 9:05. So we're going to take a break back at 9:05. So we're going to take a break back at 9:05. We're moving on to our final item for the night. The General Fund Reserve Policy Review presented by Karen Huan, our Finance Director. Review and discuss the General Fund Reserve Policy and provide direction on potential modifications. Welcome, Karen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Newsom. Good evening, members of the council. Tonight, the item in front of you is a review of the General Fund Reserve Policy. And this is also part of our financial sustainability plan. We promise to review our fund policy, to set up a well-structured fund reserve for, for the general fund, and also think about how to effectively allocate our resources. So the agenda tonight include the following. Why it's important for us, why it matters, and what is our current policy? And what approach we take to review this policy and come up with the proposed changes? And then we will take a look at the before and after, compare what are the differences. At the end, we'll ask for council direction and what is the next step? So why this matters for the city? A general fund reserve policy, it actually impact our ability to mitigate risks and continue to maintain our city service level during economic downturn, during disaster or any emergency. So it's our savings to, it's our safety net, basically. If we set it up right, we can show, we can mitigate risk and, and make sure that no matter what happened, we will continue to provide essential city services. Now, our current general fund reserve policy have some inefficiency. Staff have conduct a comprehensive study to review our, our policy and identify some issues that we need to address. And we also try to propose some changes to be more in alignment with best practices and continue to keep our credit rating at AAA rating. So, but before we go into the, the discussion, we would like to take a look at where we are with our general fund. This is a 10-year look back. As you can see, 10 years ago, our general fund fund balance have just a little bit more than 40 million. And at the current fiscal year 2425, we are projecting to close the year with a fund balance of $112 million in general fund fund balance. And this is a 10-year look back, but it's good because it shows us we have a really strong general fund, fund balance. But if we take a look at 20 years, we pull the curtain back 20 years, the, the picture is really different. It tell you a, a total different story that 20 years ago, our general fund fund balance at certain point is less than 20 million. And as you can see, back in fiscal year 2027, 28, that's where the Great Recession hit. We don't have the safety net for the city. And at that time, we have no choice but have to cut, immediately cutting services. And, and, and that tell you how important the, the general fund reserve is. And, and through that time, CalPERS also struggle with the cash flow and they come up with a lot of new idea how to bring in more, more money. So they starting to change our policy, they started to lower discount rate. So after the Great Recession, and, and we also have to, to, to tackle a lot of the pension issues with CalPERS. So I didn't highlight it here, but we, we been through a lot for over the last 20 years. We come out from the Great Recession, it pretty much start recover in 2013. And from that point on, we keep saving money for the general fund. And that do us really well during pandemic, we didn't lay off anyone, we keep the city going. And, and, and the general fund is really standing in a really strong position. Now, as everyone know, we are facing a lot of uncertainties. There's a lot of uncertainty out there. We don't know how the economy is going. People worry, but we are in a good position right now for the city because we have a strong position. The comprehensive, the comprehensive review that staff took over the last couple of months to review the general fund reserve policy include the following. We first look at the industrial standard and best practice. We also look at our peer cities, similar sized cities, and see how they handle their general fund reserve. And we also look at our AAA credit rating criteria and wanted to continue our, our credit rating, even with the proposed change. And lastly, I think it's the most important one, is that what is our specific need? What's unique to the city of San Mateo? And what's our current financial position? How is our cash, cash flow? How liquid are we? And what special risk factors that we have to consider? We have to come up with a policy that reflect our unique situation. Best practice and industry standard, this is where we usually go to is GFOA. This is a government entity that help all the government financial officers throughout our nations. They provide general guideline, training and resources. And when we talk about best practices, GFOAs where we look. Their guideline is that city and, and local governments should have a formal policy regarding their reserve. And regarding reserve level, their recommendation is at least two months of regular operating revenue or expenditures, so we can run the government for, with nothing coming in, we can run it for, for two months, no problem. And also they recommend to have a guideline to, to cover how to use a reserve and how to replenish it. So, and if the administrative fund i- it's, it's getting to a point is too excessive, they recommend that we have a strategy how to use it. So, so that, that, that's, that's the, the general guideline and best practice. Peer review, look at our similar sized cities nearby. We, we look at a couple of city we will share with the council in the following slides. We, our general observation through this exercise is that we, we notice our, our peers, they generally have put their reserve in alignment with the best practice. And overall, if they have a structured reserve policy, they come out better. That's the general observation. And here is what they look like. Daily city have one layer of general fund reserve. They set it at 17% of general fund expenditures, and they currently put everything into it. So they have about $57 million. South city put in one, one major layer, which is 20% of general fund revenue, and then two small layer. One is infrastructure reserve and the other one is pension stabilization reserve. And the rest they put in, in, on the side fund balance. That's how they structure their general fund reserve. Redwood City have 15% general fund revenue as that we serve. And they also set aside about $27 million pension trust for, for their pensions. So combined the two, they have $52 million in their general fund reserve. Mountain will have about 15 different layers in their general fund reserve. I could only have space to highlight the, the top, top one and then combine everything in, in, in the lump sum. As you can see, every city have different structure. They tailor their reserve to the special need to that city that works for them. So Mountain will overall combine all the layers they have, they have over, just over $100 million reserve for their general fund. Sunnywell have a really good structure. They have 15% contingency reserve to deal with non-financial emergency. And they also have 15% general fund revenue as a reserve for budget stabilization. So combined, they actually have about 30% reserve. And they also set aside money for potential purchasing land and, and property. So they have just a little under $130 million in their general fund reserve. Then the care also have a lot of layers. They have about 11 layers in their general fund reserve. And combine all of them, they currently have just over 100 million in their general fund reserve. And we also put in the, the county of San Mateo, they used to have only set at 10%. They just recently in September 2024, raised the reserve level to 15%. That's our county. All right. AAA credit rating. So maintaining a AAA credit rating is important because that allow the cities to borrow money at a low cost that eventually save taxpayer money when we have to do public financing for any of our facility and infrastructure needs. Credit rating agency usually have different methodology, but most of them, they, they look at the following things, which is how much debt we issues, what, what's the city's long-term obligation, how much liability we have, and how diverse and reliable our revenue source? And also whether we have a large general fund, fund balance? And how liquid are we? How is our cash flow? Whether actually at the end of the day, the, the question asked is, do you have the ability to pay the principal and interest when it become due? So this is a colorful chart showing Moody's credit rating criteria for US cities and counties. As you can see, the blue color one is the financial performance. It only weighted 30% when in their methodology. And, and within that fund balance ratio count 20%. So staff further look into it, what, what does that mean? When we change our, our, our general fund reserve policy, will we continue to meet the AAA ratio, the requirement? And, and here is what, what we highlighted, what, what ratio we have to meet. And spoiler alert, we, we do meet the ratio even with the changes. Okay. So lastly, we mentioned earlier, the most important thing is what about San Mateo? What is our need and, and, and what are the unique things that we have to, to evaluate? And here are the, are some of the risk factors. The non-physical emergency is one of the major risk factors we have to consider because our location. We have to think about this potential earthquakes, flood, fire, public health crisis, legal obligation, infrastructure emergency. Those are non-physical emergency. The physical emergency are the economic cycles, the up and downs. So it could cause revenue loss during economic downturns. It, we have short for, it's another one that cause physical emergency potentially. Pension costs, expenditure spike during the high inflation period, we all experienced that. So those are the risk factors that unique to us. Potentially, you need to a lot of our neighbors too. And another things that we also look into that are unique to us are our financial standing. How are we doing financially? What's our cash flow? What is the historic trend tell us? So San Mateo is in a, a region that our economy rebounds quicker than other places because where we are. So based on history, during recession, even everybody experienced the same recession because where we are located, our regional economy usually bounce back faster. That's the history trend tells us. And cash flow wise, we are really liquid. So we have a really strong cash flow and, and we have a lot of liquidity. And that's also another unique things to our city. And financially, as we look at the chart earlier, general fund is in a, in a good position right now. So we will talk about that later too. With that, let's take a look at our current general fund reserve structure. As we mentioned, we are estimating general fund reserve, a fund balance is going to end the year with, the current year with $112 million. And the current structure is every single dollar is considered reserve. And I think that's a problem. So let's take a look and dice it in. The first one, the first one we want to talk about the general fund reserve is the 25% operating reserve, which is 25% of the general funds operating expenditures currently stand at 42 million. And the green one is our housing set aside. We are estimating $7 million in this bucket. And the rest, after you meet the, the red and the green, the rest, every single penny go to the rainy day reserve. That's where we are. And the problem with that is that actually there's about $10 million. It, it's currently sitting in the, in the rainy day reserve, but it's already budgeted for CIP. It's still sitting in, in our general fund. It just because it haven't spent and haven't been transferred out. We call that a CIP carryover. So it's as if we have that money in the rainy day reserve, but, but it's already earmarked for, for CIP and capital projects. You can't touch it. It's just sitting there waiting to be spent and transferred out. So the current structure have this issue causing us to, to think we have more money than we actually have. So I'll come back to this one later. So I, I think the So I I think the the proposed change, first thing first, is to take that CIP carryover out of the rainy day reserve to to make it clear that the rainy day reserve actually doesn't have that much money. The purple layer, it's a CIP carryover reserve that you need to look at it differently. The second proposed change is our operating, the twenty five percent operating reserve. The reason why we want to propose the change is that currently the definition didn't distinguish how we can use this operating reserve. Can we use it for disaster? Can we use it for economic downturn? It seems that we can use it for both situation. With this proposed change, we are proposing to rename the operating reserve to contingency reserve and provide a clear definition. This contingency reserve, it's only for extraordinary one time event. And this is for unforeseen, non-financial emergency, which have nothing to do with economic downturn. It's really the money you set aside and you don't touch unless there's extraordinary events such as natural disaster. There's public health crisis again, there's infrastructure failure or emergency repair that you have to put money to fix a major infrastructure right away. That's the the pocket of money that you set aside for that purposes. And the proposed change also include lowering that percentage from twenty five percent to fifteen percent. And the reason being is that we all heard about LA Fire. There's a lot of disaster could happen overnight, you cannot prepare for it. Then why is that okay for us to lower that reserve level? And the reason is because our 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 cash, it's actually invested in a pool. We we manage our our cash and investment in in a so-called pool investment with every single fund money pooling together and invest together. So although we only set aside fifteen percent, which will lower the reserve into from from forty two million dollar to twenty four million and free up seventeen million. It's okay, because if there's an emergency, this twenty five million dollar will provide us immediate cash to take care of the immediate needs. But when we need more, we can use the pool cash for interfund borrowing for short term relief. We should also think about during natural disaster, we will have to rely on federal FEMA funding and the state funding to get us through those disaster. It's a model that has been used by Santa Rosa's Fire that couple of years ago. They cannot survive a major disaster, just rely on your your reserve. That's not enough, not enough for anybody to do that. So we just need to set up a reserve that is enough for us to go through the initial phase for debris removal, for for relief and 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 knowing that we need to rely on other funding source to get through a major disaster. And 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 we are in a really good situation because our pool cash, it's it's large and we don't have liquidity issues. So pooling all the cash together, the the city's current investment pool have over four hundred million dollar. And and that's how strong our our liquidity is. The proposed change number three, we we have to look at our rainy day reserve. So our current rainy day reserve also doesn't have a clear definition what it is for. I always get question from council, what is the difference between rainy day reserve and an aside fund balance? Are they different or are they the same thing? So um, by providing a clear definition will help us guide policy decision and make make better choices. So the proposed change is rename the rainy day reserve to budget stabilization reserve and provide a clear definition what this budget stabilization reserve is. So this is to address the other risk that we just talked about, the financial risk. During financial emergency, such as economic downturn or pension issues or anything financial, physical related risk, emergency, that's where where this reserve will come into play. Currently, the rainy day reserve have a target. It's set at thirty million dollar as the the dollar we try to hit. This is a fixed dollar, it doesn't change over time. So it would make sense to set a percentage. And we link this percentage, we are proposing fifteen percent to the general fund revenue. Not expenditure, but revenue. The reason is that our our budget vulnerability is really on some of our revenue, such as sales tax, such as real property transfer tax. They are sensitive to economic changes. During economic downturn, sales tax get hit, real property transfer tax get hit. If we set the reserve level at a percentage of our general fund revenue, when revenue go up, your reserve level go up. When it go down, your reserve level automatically adjust down and release the fund out to your operation. So it's a really good mechanic to build a budget stabilization reserve with your your general fund revenue as the baseline to calculate that that way. All right, I I I felt I need to tap, sorry. Thank you, I I'm good. So next one is setting aside a ten million dollar initial funding to set up a new pension stabilization reserve. Pension, rising pension cost is always a concern in everyone's mind. We committed to provide pension for our employee. We wanted to make sure that we continue to commit to that obligation and fulfill our commitment. So setting up a pension stabilization reserve will help us do that. There's a difference between paying down our pension liability than a pension stabilization reserve. So directly pay down our pension liability will help us reduce our liability. The pension stabilization reserve is to control cash flow, to stabilize our budget in in a sense. Kind of kind of looking at at it like a cash cash flow approach. Because CalPERS every year ask the city to contribute certain dollar into pension. And when they miss the expected investment return, then the pensions might come in. And if they they increase their contribution requirement dramatically, then we will have to force to reduce our service or cut service in order to make that payment. We would, we don't want to do that. Setting up this pension stabilization reserve will allow us to to smooth this out. If CalPERS one day asks us to increase our contribution by four million dollar, five million dollar, we could use this reserve to to put in part of the money instead of cutting services. So that was, that will provide a a a stabilization for our service level. Okay, so this is a proposed change number four, but it's also a recap of what we have talked about. So on the left, it's our current general fund policy, only three layers. Twenty five percent operating reserve, housing set aside, everything else is rainy day reserve. First purpose is to take out the CIP carryover to make it clear, this is not part of your rainy day reserve. And then proposed change number two is to rename our operating reserve to contingency reserve. Specifically call it out is for non-physical emergency. Lower the percentage from twenty five to fifteen, free up seventeen million dollar. No change to housing set aside. And the rainy day reserve, we break it down into couple pieces. Set up budget stabilization reserve and call it out, this is for physical emergency. Set it at fifteen percent of general fund revenue. And set up a pension stabilization reserve, put in ten million dollar initial funding and free up eighteen million from this propose. So seventeen plus eighteen is thirty five million. What do we do with that? So this is the proposed change number four. We would like to propose set up a capital investment reserve to address our unfunded capital project needs. So if we put in twenty five million dollar into this new capital investment reserve, we can provide seed money for all the critical projects that we currently have no funding for. And this is what we call it our down payment. If we want to do something significant to improve our 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 resident and 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 the facility they use, we have to start investing. And by investing, we know we don't have the money to do it all yet, but we have to start somewhere. And putting aside money to do that is similar how you manage your household. If you eventually want to buy a house, you need to start saving up for the twenty percent in order to purchase a house in the future. So the rest, the rest of the money, we we keep it at the unaside fund balance. With that, this is a comparison. This is the before, the current structure. Everything is in general fund reserve. This is the new reserve structure. General fund reserve, one hundred and twenty million dollar estimate. Twenty five put into a capital investment reserve. The rest remain in general fund. So that give us about seventy seven million dollar in general fund reserve. That that's all the target we set at the level that we feel comfortable to to go with that. And the rest, we still have ten million dollar on the side fund balance. So when we call all the money we serve in the current structure, it it almost feels like you you cannot touch it because it's name reserve. Whenever you call something reserve, it's almost label it, it's something set aside for some special purposes, you should not touch it. By setting up the the new structure, we we know what it's for. We 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 provide a a definition, what is for, for non-physical emergency, physical emergency, pension, what it's for? And what is the target level? After you meet all the target level, the rest of the money should go back to the unaside fund balance, which is the most flexible fund that we can spend on. That means the council at your discretion, this ten million dollar can be spent on something that either support an initiative, one time project. That's the funding that we can actually think about where it can go. Or you can keep it and don't use it and just keep an extra cushion for uncertainty. It's up to the council's decision. But now you at least know, hey, I actually have an unaside fund balance I can think about. In instead of before, everything is just a reserve. It's almost like you cannot think about it. So by setting up this this new structure, actually it can help you to know what is our reserve level. Do we have enough? And if we do, then what can we actually mobilize and can help use for the community to to do something for them? So this is just another recap. This is after all the proposed change, I know there's a lot of changes. That's why it took months to build this new news, proposed policy. But hopefully this can, this can help you understand. The seventy seven million dollar after the the proposed change will stay in the general fund reserve. And they are at, they are for different purposes and 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 have a different target level. The unaside fund balance is projecting at ten million dollar. They are mostly make consists of the measure S money and measure CC funds and some unaside general fund. And the rest is the twenty five million dollar that we thought would be a good investment. The first, don't think about it about the 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 last one, but it's just our first set aside for capital investment. In the future, when we get in a situation, we have one time revenue, we have surplus, then we can put more into this. And um. So that's the proposed change. I summarize all the proposed change here one more time. I know there's a lot of changes, but we hope that through this policy, proposed policy change and for council consideration, we can set up a reserve that can serve the city well, provide a safety net, but also allocate our resources more effectively. So we can actually mobilize the resource to either invest into the future or use it for for current operation. And the and staff recommendation is to establish formal policy for the general fund reserve we proposed change and establish a formal capital investment reserve policy, oh, capital investment reserve policy, yes. And then. Lastly, I will need council direction. And I I'm here, I'm happy to take any question too. I know it's a lot of changes, so if you have any questions, I I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Karen, for a fantastic presentation, very thorough and very colorful, so thank you. I guess now it's time to open up for public comment. Do we have any requests for public comment?
No requests in chambers, and I have no hands raised in Zoom.
Okay, then we will close public comment and open it up to questions, comments, directions from council. Who would like to go first? Okay, Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Just trying to balance it down here. Excellent, excellent. Karen and the entire team, this is, you're here, but it took a lot of people. And everyone else, all the department heads, everyone was involved in this, so thank you all. And it it just makes so much sense. It makes so, so, so much sense. Could you do me a favor and go back two slides where you show that you have sort of the summary? Okay, so I can sort of talk a little bit about each one of these things. Number one, separating the CIP carryover from the rainy day reserve, duh, that's my comment on that one.
On the record.
Yeah, right, put that in quotes. Setting the target level at fifteen percent for non-fiscal emergencies makes so much sense as well. And then separating it through, because the fiscal emergencies, I think, VLF, 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 five hundred times. And I think that's gonna be very real. I think we're also going to be seeing tremendous risk, as you are, I'm sure you're already trying to manage with what funds are coming to us, from where, and not to go into the details, but it's could be a tough couple of years. So I think really understanding what we have available to us and how we can use it is going to be helpful, not just for you and your staff and department heads and council, but also for the general public. Because we heard even tonight, we've got this huge rainy day reserve. We can just go in and do whatever we want to with it, which, when you lump it all into one number, it's logical that people think that, so really important. The pension stabilization reserve, we are going to need this money this year because I would be shocked if CalPERS doesn't come back to us and say, whoops, we didn't make our target. This time perhaps through no fault of their own. But you know, reading the report, I couldn't tie back where that ten million came from. So your presentation was very helpful in helping me understand that, right? But you know, it's it's right there. And you know, it's great seeing continued measure S funds and really being helpful along with measure CC. That's something that really has helped us a great deal. And then if you could go forward again, excuse me, to that. The capital investment reserve, you know, we talk, we're doing it, we just haven't said we're doing it. Like, we need money for stormwater, we need money to fix the pools, we need money so at least we can think a little bit more strategically about it, so it makes sense. And then the, I think that's, those are my key comments. I mean, I think it just makes a lot of sense, but I think it makes a lot of sense to educate people. I mean, I will support this, but it's going to take a lot of education to educate the general public about what this means and why it makes sense. And also gives more transparency. And I think that's something I didn't hear you mention once in your presentation, but in the outbound communication, I would have it be accountability and transparency on every page. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, council member. Sir, quick at the key.
Thank you. Great presentation, Karen. I echo a lot of the same sentiments as council member Diaz Nash. Totally okay with renaming and carryover. Just a follow-up question for the sake of transparency, because we are talking about taking out or moving around $25 million of taxpayer funding. What are the proposed CIP projects that we're thinking about?
So right now, we, you know, I can say proposed. We're looking at 20% down payment for future projects. One of the projects that the council, the previous council identified was the MLK modernization and also the MLK pool. This could potentially provide a 20% down payment potentially for such a project. We also have a number of facilities like the Joinville Pool, which is another $3 million that we're looking at, little maybe higher than that. That could also be another place where we'd look at funds. Additionally, we're conducting facility assessments right now. And so with that, it's a multimillion dollars in needs that we're going to be having, that we're going to be planning for. And that facility assessment will come before the council in early fall of this year. And so we'll present that, but this is going to be another place where we can tap into some funds to just continue the useful life of our facilities, to extend those as, as needed based off of the facility assessment. So that's just kind of a handful of different needs. There's significant needs in our city facilities. You're going to get a CIP overview at the next meeting, and that'll go into way more detail as to what our funding needs are here with the city. I could just say you're going to get a newsletter. And in my newsletter that's going out to the public, we have 300 million in unfunded capital improvement projects.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. And I know this is to seed some of our unfunded projects. And so I think that's great. And I would just echo what council member Diaz Nash said about, you know, we really want to be as transparent as possible with the public about, you know, how we're supporting them and what we're doing for them to hopefully get, you know, more investment back into the community. So I'm supportive of everything I've heard. Great presentation. And those are all my comments, short and sweet.
I, I think there's just also something to mention here is that right now, the council currently has a 25% operational reserve. That's what it is. Really, when you look at just the contingency reserve, which is that emergency reserve, and then you take the budget stabilization reserve, that's 15 and 15. You're actually going to 30% reserve policy. That's what you're really doing here. If you want to talk about transparency and communication, that's what's happening. We're just identifying what buckets to be used. Like, we're looking at budget stabilization. That's how we've been able to get through the previous year where we ran a $5 million deficit. This year, we're looking at about a $6 million deficit. Next year, we'll have another presentation on April 21st to talk about next year's, but we're looking at multimillion dollar deficits again. These are difficult times, but it's feast and famine in, in, at least for the city of San Mateo, because we rely on the real property transfer taxes. So in really good times, when we see a lot of homes being sold or a lot of commercial properties being sold, you saw in that chart how it goes from, you know, 20 million, and then you saw the spike as the real, real estate market just really took off. And those real property transfer tax really helped with the reserves. But we also understand that with that, you have to take those reserves and deploy those over years where you have difficulties in uncertain financial times. And so that's how we're able to kind of run it steady over the years of uncertainty that we're experiencing right now. But ultimately, there's a financial sustainability plan that we're working on. This is one of the, one of the initial steps in that plan, bringing this reserve policy forward. But it's multi-pronged. There's, I think, like eight steps that we're working on, maybe.
11.
11 steps that we, that we identified, that we're going to be deploying over the next couple of years. And we're just really grateful for just strong financial guardrails by the council, previous councils, that have been able to build up this reserve. And then the staff, that's also been really helpful and supportive to maintain that over this time too, that allows us to be able to deploy in these difficult times. So that's just kind of giving you kind of an overall look at the reserve policy itself.
Thank you. I think we are in a situation quite unique. A lot of the cities that have deficit issues, they will, first thing first is cut CIP spending. Usually that's the case. When you try to balance your budget, you reduce your contribution to capital improvement and try to defer some of those. And, and that's almost like municipal budget 101 step number one. But we are not doing it here. We are actually setting aside money and committed to improve our infrastructure while we are going through difficult challenges. So we are in a unique situation, but I, I think by looking at our general fund, how much we have, how much we need to set aside, really need to set aside to give us the, the, the safety for uncertainty to mitigate risk. And what we feel comfortable releasing and how much to release and in what's, what kind of structure to do it. It, it keep council flexibility to know where your resources is so you can make better decision how to use the funding to support what kind of projects. This is just first step, like Alex mentioned. This is just the first step. We set up the structure, we set aside the money, and it will have other conversation and discussion to follow.
No other questions? Council member. Director, may I?
Thank you through the mayor. Thank you, Director Hong, for your presentation. I just had one clarifying question about the CIP carryover because it seems, it appears to me through the presentation that we're not making a functional change to how we use it or move it. We're just identifying that it's, in fact, money that's slated to go through the general fund balance into CIP eventually. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And.
So it's encumbered for existing projects. We've already basically identified those funds for projects that are well underway. We just got to transfer them.
Indeed. Let's see, I had at least one other question. I'm sorry, I lost my place here. But I was just curious about, and I'll just preface anything I say by acknowledging the conversation in which we are acknowledging we may see deficits in the future. But if we, I, I, if we had an opportunity, if the city had an opportunity to acquire some sort of property that seemed beneficial, as we saw modeled in the city of Sunnyvale's reserve policy, would that be something we would need to use unassigned fund balance for? Or could there possibly be something like the CIP reserve?
So the first place I would look at is the unassigned reserve. That's exactly the 10 million. And you'll see in Sunnyvale's, if you look at the presentation, it's six and a half million. We have 10 million here. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I believe I saw in the admin report that the intent is to review this annually?
This is intended to be reviewed by the finance director through the budget process annually. It doesn't necessarily have to bring back for the council to review annually. So, but any change to the policy will have, will bring back to the council.
But it is a good, you know, when we look at just overall the budget stabilization, you see the 25 million right there. With the, the budget presentation that you'll see in the next couple of weeks, we're going to have to take a portion of that. That's part of that, but, you know, it's smoothing out when we have to have deficit years. And so you're going to see us tap into that as part of our strategy for next year's budget. But we'll come back and I want to make sure that we're checking in each and every year and refine as needed and provide updates to the council so that you guys are all aware of the reserves and where we're at.
Excellent. Thank you. Otherwise, I echo my colleagues' comments and support this. Thank you.
Okay. Most of my questions have already been asked, which is great about going last. I do want to make sure that we're very transparent on what we do spend our CIP money from. I know we've got a ton of projects and so we have way more than, than we have money for. But I think it's, it's great to make sure we're making sure that that's transparent and that public are buying in and understanding where the money's going. I did have a question, like, so, and I think I heard the answer already. But for example, if we have deficit years like we have for the last two and likely will again next year, that comes out of the stabilization account?
It come out from the budget stabilization account.
Okay, and then likewise, if VLF were not to happen and not to come from the state, does that also come from the stabilization account?
Yes.
And what is our VLF currently expected for this year?
We already, we see the VLF shortfall in August. So that was from two years ago. So the, the letter that the advocacy letter mayor used sign recently, it's for next fiscal year, but it's also fighting for the VLF shortfall from two years ago.
Yes.
So we, we don't know the result, what it's going to be until probably mid-June. I expect that, maybe I can.
But we're looking at about 6.6 million. That's basically the amount that we stand to potentially lose if they, they don't act on it this year. Correct, Karen?
Yeah, from, from two years ago, 6.6.
So not to be negative, but just to be asking and putting it out there. If we suddenly saw that VLF just dries up, which, you know, the state's in bad shape, and we continue to see off years for four or five years and at $5 million a year, what happens if we run out of 25 million? Do we then pull from other budgets or what's the?
So, so we have multiple levers that we can pull here. So we can always come back and refine the policy if we need to ease. Because we have to make, just right off the bat in July, I believe, the pension that we, the pension payment is like 20, 25 million dollars. Is that correct, Karen?
About 24.
That's right out the door before doing anything. So you would tap in, there's certain levers that you can pull in these reserves to go ahead and help pay. The other piece is that if you look at the $25 million capital investment reserve that we're setting up to, worst case scenario, right now annually, with the city has basically our own internal policy of contributing 4.25 million of our general fund monies annually from our operating general fund account to CIPs. What you would do is if we really had to pull, there's, there's different ways. We would take from that 25 million, 4.25 million to smooth that out. So there's different levers to pull, mayor, if we had to really dig deep. And we can always come back here and change the overall policy.
Sure. I mean, honestly, I absolutely, and I think with everyone, hope that that would not be, ever be the case. I just want to make sure that there's structure and plans in place that if, if we get two or three years down the road and we're like, man, it's not getting better, that we have a, an exit strat, or a repair strategy.
A refinement. So you have an annual refinement here, and I have to, as your city manager, I always have to plan and think of catastrophe, the worst case scenarios, and have to plan accordingly back. So looking at all those scenarios, and that's what I work with our finance director. So that's how I'm able to respond to your direct question and know exactly which levers we would have to pull in different scenarios, in different cases, and make that recommendation to the council.
Okay.
And be transparent with the community.
Well, that sounds great. Thank you. I appreciate the answers from both of you. What's next? Do we have a motion?
Oh, actually.
Do we have questions we need to answer you for you still? There we go.
We are asking for council direction and.
That's, okay.
And we put out what is staff recommendation is. And we would like to set a formal policy and, and propose changes. And hopefully council will support it. And also, not just for the general fund reserve, we are establishing a brand new reserve, which is called the capital investment reserve. So we also looking for council direction, whether you support a formal policy for that. Because it, it's not just a reserve, it's not just a bucket. In the policy, you, you will see that who have authorization and how do we fund it. There's a, a whole session to, to manage that new policy, new reserve that we tried to set up for, for capital. And also whether you will support transferring $25 million into this new reserve.
So if the council gives us general direction, the action will actually take place as part of the budget adoption process in June. That's where you guys will, as part of the budget adoption, you will have adopted this, these reserve policies here. And that's what would go into effect. We're just bringing it to see, and I'm seeing nodding heads of the overall approach. So we'll build that into our overall budget development, having this reserve.
Through the mayor?
Yes, of course.
Um, when you bring this back in June, can you just outline, like, what are the reserve policies for us as well?
Absolutely.
What are the criteria?
Yeah, so I envision us as part of our budget book to be able to lay out. Usually you put all your financial policies in there. And so it'll be very clear, all this of how it works and the mechanisms.
Okay, so we have four things that you've asked for our support, and it sounds like you have unanimous support on all four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll make a slide where the reserve money go for, for the budget public hearing.
Okay.
Transparency. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. Wow, we got through it. Okay. We do have that closed session lingering, so.
Sorry.
Let's go ahead and move on to reports and announcements. Who would like to go first for the council? Council member.
Let me just start. Why? Does anyone, would anyone else like to go first? Okay.
I have, I have some ones that don't involve council actions.
I have some reports that I can be quick with. I'll try my best to be quick. I had the pleasure of attending Rethink Waste Annual Board and TAC Retreat in the city of Belmont. And it was, it was a great, it was a great retreat. I think sometimes when boards organize longer meetings, you know, I, I'm not exactly sure whether we'll get the most out of every hour, but this time I think we really did. And we had a tour of the facility itself in a, in a bus. You know, the re, the Shoreway Recycling Facility. It was probably the first time people took a tour in a bus like that. And so it was, it was great to, to really, you know, tour, to tour the, the whole facility and, and, and see with our own eyes, things like the San Carlos Airport planes going right overhead. And notice when it starts raining that we have a sort of a makeshift repair facility for some of our larger tractor trailers. And so when we start talking about capital improvements that Rethink Waste may need to make in the future, we have some visual images to go with some deep dive. And it was, it was great to start outlining all the different parts and capital pieces we currently have, how well they're being maintained and how much we might need to set aside for future investments there. And then step by step, more broadly, I felt it was a great presentation. And I think Jack Johnson and I got a good, better sense of where we are today and where we are going. So that was great. And then Peninsula Clean Energy, we had a monthly meeting as well. I just wanted to share that they came up with some factoids that were fun to share because, you know, we, the, JPA has, has done a lot of good for the city of San Mateo. So far to date, it's just been a little over five years. $22.8 million has been saved by San Mateo customers by switching to Peninsula Clean Energy, even at the, the equal plus rate, which is kind of the default rate. And a 98% reduction in emissions from electricity, which every time I hear is, is just fantastic. And did you know that, you know, thanks in part to great work by City Manager's Office and our Sustainability Quarter Coordinator Andrea Chow, we've put together 386 EV chargers installed with 682 in development in the broader city. This council, or rather, a recent council, got to review a solar system that would be installed at Barrister Rec Center in the, in the future. And of course, the city got a $1.4 million grant from Peninsula Clean Energy to help the EV chargers and other. from Peninsula Clean Energy to help the EV chargers and other work in the future for our future. So thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Danielle, please go.
I'm glad I made you laugh. I just wanted to say thank you so much. As part of the Third Avenue and Norfolk intersection upgrades, the creek trail after at least 20 years was repaved. It's really incredible. And I was very surprised because I I knew the city staff had mentioned it could take a year, and I think it was done in less than two months. So it just means a lot to everybody in the community. People are already using about it. They're talking about it on social media. It was definitely a big up moment. So thank you so much. In other news, I am hoping for an update on speed surveys.
Yeah, so I was able to receive the latest update to staff. So just bear with me real quick. So we're currently assessing all roadways to clarify where statutory primifacial speed limits of 25 miles per hour will apply. These findings would include some roadways where there was a prior assumption that a speed survey was necessary. And as such, an ordinance may need to be brought to the council to remove prior speed limit designations within ordinances and indicate that they should have a statutory speed limit applied. Additionally, staff are also reviewing where 20 miles per hour business activity districts can be applied specifically in the downtown and off of 25th Avenue and would bring recommendations at the same time. For those areas that are needing survey, staff anticipates bringing those to council by the end of this year. It's part of your blue sky agenda and items. So that starts July with the caveat that we will only be bringing back locations that have the same or reduced posted speed limit recommendations. The final batch of locations will be those that have been identified for increased speed limits, where we may either want to get additional feedback from council on getting those adopted sooner at the higher posted speed limit or leave them with an unadopted, unenforceable speed limit and work toward implementing measures to reduce speeds there overall, which would likely take a few years. So that's the update. About 70% of our roadways will fall into that 25 miles per hour or less. So that's a quicker option so that it'll allow to give the tools to our great police department to be able to enforce and keep people safe here. And then probably the other 30% of the roads, that'll be by the end of this year, to bring those surveys forward. And you need to have those baseline surveys in order for our police department to be able to enforce throughout the city. And so we're getting the ball rolling on all levels of this initiative. Hope that helps.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Last thing, a new item for council to consider. I know that we're always looking for creative ways to share great updates with residents and our constituents. Alex, you do a phenomenal job on your newsletter. I happen to be looking at what other cities do. And there are several cities along the peninsula that have something called a mayoral minute once a month. And so I wanted to see if there was an appetite to agendize adding that as a monthly update in the newsletter where the mayor would provide minute update. Second?
Second.
I think, I think I saw three nodding heads. Staff can actually, I don't need direction on this. It's something that we can take back to our communications team, and it's something we can implement in the next few weeks if you really want to. We provide weekly updates to the council, and we also have ENU. So we have a great list of different updates that can be provided to our community. And the mayor can go ahead and do that. And then we have great communications staff who can video you, the mayor, or you can send us the video if you want.
Do we have an update on actually getting, having a communications manager in house? I thought you were hiring somebody?
So right now, we're looking at just overall the salary and the comparisons and the benchmarks on it. And so it's below median. So that's something that we are looking at further at this time. But we're able to utilize a coordinator, and we're using consultant services to help support that initiative at this time.
Can I just, through the mayor, ask a question specific about that? Because when I first got on council, I thought that was an incredibly wonderful idea we should be doing immediately. And I was told we can't do it because it was all about the mayor giving positions on city activities and et cetera and so on. So if that opinion has changed, I'm thrilled.
You know, we can take, go back and look at that question. Because the issue is, you can't have what's called like a mass mailing at public expense that features an elected official. So we would have to make sure that any physical written communication would comply with that state law.
It's a video.
If it's.
Digital.
If it's a digital, then that's, I think, less of a concern because, you know, the mass mailing at public expense, state rule applies to physical materials, not necessarily digital materials. But we can.
We can look into this further.
To touch on that, that's why we we send, usually we send two mailers out per year. We always have that be the city manager as opposed to whoever's the mayor at the time. And that's for that reason, right? Okay.
If I may, so I saw that Foster City does this.
Sure.
That's where the idea came from. I think San Carlos does it too. So perhaps we could, you know, do a little bit of research. Digital sounds like that's the ideal state.
Yep.
And proceed.
That's great.
And thank you for the information, Lisa.
Okay.
Start your.
Who'd like to go next?
Oh, okay. Well, you, you went down to Burbank. Yeah, okay.
Nothing to report about?
All right. So I guess that what I, all I will say is number one, as we've said all night long, it's San Mateo celebrates week. Check out samatemateosalabates.com. There's an event going on every day this week. Saturday, it winds up at MLK Center. There's a great trivia contest on Friday night. We all missed San Mateo shakes tonight, which was Romeo and Juliet, because we were in special session. But just enjoy the library. Have a great time. And then I was down the day before council member Fernandez was down in Burbank. I was down on the Public Safety Committee of Cal Cities. And it was, I mean, there was a lot of discussion about what various public safety offices are doing about wildfire danger in the new fire hazard maps, which I know our fire department and our police department are very engaged in and and all of our different departments. But the more information we get out, the better. And for anyone who doesn't know, SMC Fire will come out to your house and meet with you and your neighbors and talk about your fire danger and what you can do. So most of San Mateo is in a moderate zone. But we all saw Embers traveling three miles in Los Angeles, so moderate means nothing. So I would strongly encourage all of our neighborhood associations to have that that done. And in Baywood, we actually had on Tuesday night, tomorrow night, there is going to be a webinar by the California Department of Insurance and SMC Fire and a couple of other groups. So please check it out. You can, you can look on the Fire Department at the BNA website. Also, what was interesting to me was the fact, and it was probably the number one priority that the Public Safety Committee Proposition 36, which talked about really increasing money devoted to combating retail theft and fentanyl crimes, which passed as a proposition overwhelmingly by the citizens in November, was not funded in the governor's budget. So that was, that was an interesting, rather passionate discussion that ensued after that. And so that will be something that is taken, Cal Cities is taking as a priority back up to, you know, the, the government and the budget discussions. And then, as you probably heard, in the general sessions, the probably the number one priority of Cal Cities is really to get involved in the discussions about what housing laws will be coming down this year out of, out of Sacramento and what priorities there are and what role the city plays and what happens. So there's a lot to come, but that will be the number one priority of Cal Cities. So that's my update.
Fantastic. Anybody else? All right, well, I have a list, so I don't know what you guys are all doing. First off, Lights and Sirens this Friday. Chief, you want to give a plug? Come on up. Wake you up in the back. While he's coming up, a reminder to all of the council to make sure that we're promoting the open commissioner spots. Thanks, Ed, for coming down. Give us a blurb about.
Yes, Friday, April 11th. San Mateo Powell's Primary Fundraiser of the Year, our Lights and Sirens Gala at the San Mateo Event Center. This year is a Polynesian theme, so come enjoy a night in paradise with us and help us raise money for the kids. It's, we, Powell does a lot more than just what people realize as far as activities and dance and sports and all those types of stuff. There's a lot of mentorship, education-based programs, and providing opportunity for kids who would not otherwise have that opportunity. So the, the money we raised that night is very, very important. You can jump on the Powell webpage, and there are still tickets available. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, chief. Okay. Please, go ahead. Okay. Let's see. April 19th is the Park and Recs Annual Extravaganza. Lots of fun, so come out. I think, how many of us are judging? Are we all judge? I'm a judge. At least, at least, we have a council majority. We might have to be careful. For voting on, what are we voting on? Best costumes. Okay, great. Also, we've got Earth Day. It is after the next meeting, but not just barely. We have an Earth Day cleanup scheduled on 4/26, so please promote that. And Council of Cities. We have our Council of Cities Dinner, and normally it's the last Friday of the month. This particular year, we were slated to be the fourth Friday of the month. There's five Fridays in May. The fourth Friday would have been a conflict because it was the beginning of Memorial Day weekend. And so we heard from staff politely that they'd rather not be working the Friday of a three-day weekend. So we then looked at moving it to the following weekend, which conflicted with the Cal Dems Conference. And I knew we'd be losing at least one of our council members, perhaps two. And so we went back to the Council of Cities and had a compromise date of Friday, May 16th. So I just want to make sure all of you guys are marking your calendar because we've moved it around twice. And I want to make sure we have full council at our own Council of Cities Dinner. Okay. Well, anyhow, the last two things were, sorry, I got two more things. Do we have an update on Bay Meadows Parking? When we'll be meeting? Or do we, is that date still in flux?
I'll ask our Public Works Director. Is it April 22nd, Matt? Yeah, so it's April 22nd. We're going to be meeting at the Police Department, 6:30 PM. 6:30 PM.
Fantastic. I just want to make sure I can get that word out about that. Thank you. If, is it possible to get a very quick update on how we're progressing on our train quiet zone?
I'll ask our Public Works Director, Matt Fabry, to come up.
Thank you.
And give a quick report out.
Thank you, Matt. Sorry to drag you guys up.
We're here for. We're continuing to make progress. I expect that we'll be coming back to council probably after summertime. We're going through some of the circulation analysis to figure out what the impacts would be of both single and double closure options that we've looked at, including looking at some of the concerns that residents raised when we came to council previously about areas that we had not looked at in our previous circulation analysis. So that's what's going to take us a little bit of time, as well as doing some of the public outreach on those. But we expect to come back to council with something probably in the August timeframe that would be a recommendation on where we move forward from there.
Fantastic. I think the only follow-up would be, I know with Hayward Park Station that there's only pedestrian crossings at grade. Have we had any luck finding more about what it would entail to make that be a quiet zone or corridor, and if it's possible to do that sooner? Only because that's one of the areas that people are really frustrated by.
I'd have to, I mean, it's been that way for, for years, I believe. Being a former commuter from that station, I don't know about doing it earlier. It would be included in the overall citywide quiet zone.
But it's in the plan. Okay. Fantastic. All right. Thank you so much. And I lied, I got one more. Okay. We found out last week from these elementary school district that they will not be helping us this year with funding of an SRO. So I wanted to kind of have a very quick council discussion about what we thought we should be doing about that. How do I, I didn't want to bring it back, right? So.
I think that right now, I haven't been able to provide an update. But I know that our police department's working very closely with the school district, and there's great opportunity through Powell. And I believe, Ed, that the school district's going to be bringing the item back again, right? For Powell funding?
Yes, it may not be specific to SRO.
Yeah, it won't be specific to SRO, but there is Powell funding. And then we are still in conversations with the San Mateo High School District. And then additionally, we just submitted a grant today for funding a potential SRO position as well. So the police department's working really hard at this. And I can provide an update after probably the next school board meeting.
Fantastic. That's it. Yes, Councilwoman Sworko Kadiki.
Thank you, through the mayor. Can I just make a comment on this? So I know this was a blue sky item that was discussed. And there were some newspaper reports on this item. So I just want to clarify for the public because the newspaper article said that we were adding our SROs. And so I just want to reiterate that the intention was not to add, it was to continue to fund. So I just want to clarify that. Continue to fund. That's all. Thank you.
So I just wanted to.
Are we safe and legal?
I just want to remind the council, this is the reports and announcements portion of the meeting. So it's not for discussing, it's to report briefly on an item of interest or make an announcement.
Sure. I guess I started by reporting that we found we weren't going to be getting the funding. So, I mean, that's part of my role with the school, the school board. But, okay. We will bring it back. So that's great. And now I yield to Councilmember Fernandez.
Yeah, sorry. I thought I didn't have anything turns, but I did. I want to shout out our chief for winning an award from the Elks Club. Received the distinguished citizenship award and amended for outstanding and meritorious service to humanity by San Mateo California Lodge 1112.
Nice.
That's pretty awesome. Congratulations to our chief. And then I just wanted to put, just let our communities know that I'm going to be doing the welcoming at an event for that Supervisor Corzo is holding at MLK on Wednesday, which is a Know Your Rights Seminar that will be primarily in Spanish in partnership with Faith in Action. And so it's basically, you know, just making sure that you know your rights when it comes to dealing with immigrant services, ICE. And so if anybody's interested in attending, please check out Supervisor Corzo's webpage or her social media.
That's this Wednesday?
That's this Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anything else before we adjourn? No? All right. And I know we're actually adjourning to closed session in Conference Room C, so I will close the session. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, just to clarify, we, we have not received any requests to speak on the closed session item.
Sorry.
On the agenda.
And if I may, so because we're adjourning the council immediately following the closed session, I just wanted to clarify, there will be no action taken at the closed session. So there's nothing to report out following the closed session.
Thank you.